It is now seven PM on Thursday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, and I call this meeting of the Bellevue Planning Commission to order. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Casey.
Here.
Perrin.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
Arnie.
Here.
Jacobson. Ackley.
Here.
Cutsworth.
Present.
Ritz.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Thank you.
This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act, a copy of which can be found in the back vestibule of the hearing room. At this time, I would ask that all commissioners and all audience members to please silence or turn off cell phones or any other electronic device that could disrupt our proceedings. Thank you. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to revise or approve the Planning Commission's meeting minutes for the March twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen, regular meeting.
Motion to approve is written. Second.
Motion by Ackley. A second by Casey.
All in favor, motion carried.
At this time, I'd like to accept on the record all staff reports, attachments, memos, and handouts regarding each application, staff. Any updates or additions since the packet was mailed last week?
You've been given seven letters, emails, notes regarding, all regarding the annexation proposals tonight. I'll announce each one as we get to the specific area that they pertain to.
Anything else?
Nope.
I'll move to accept all, to the record, all staff reports, attachments, memos, and handouts regarding the application, each application.
I'll second.
Motion by Kane, second by, what's, Cutsworth.
All in favor, motion carried.
Consent agenda of public hearings, we have no consent agenda this evening. Moving on to public hearings. We have several public hearings this evening. I will announce each case and then ask if there are any updates from the planning department. After that, the applicant will have an opportunity to present their request. After the applicant has been heard, the public will be allowed to provide any testimony that they would like to consider, that they would like considered in the record. Those testifying should come to the podium, state and spell their name, and sign in for the record. Testimony should be limited to three minutes, and I reserve the right to shorten that time if we have a large number of people coming forward to testify. After any testimony is taken, the applicant shall have the opportunity for rebuttal, after which we will close the public hearing. Please treat others who are speaking in the same manner as you would like to be treated when speaking. Please, if you would like to say something that's already been said, come up, just acknowledge that for the record, and then sit back, you know, with, if it's already been said once, twice, five times, just acknowledge for the record that you're agreeing, disagreeing with it. Our first public hearing is a request for a conditional use permit for tax lots nine E one, nine E two, nine F one, all located in the southwest quarter of section twenty-three, T fourteen N, R thirteen E, of the Sixth Prime Meridian, Sarpy County, Nebraska, for the purpose of auto sales. Applicant Auto Source LLC, location four one zero Galvin Road North, case number C U P one nine zero three dash zero one. Staff, any updates?
No, there are not.
Is the applicant present?
The applicant requested a continuance of this item.
Okay. We have a request for a continuance, so I have a motion.
You do have a public hearing.
Gotcha.
Alright.
Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, closing public hearing. What are the wishes of commissioners?
I make a motion to continue this matter.
Second.
Motion by Cutsworth, second by Kane.
To a date certain, of May twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen.
All voted yes, motion carried.
This item will be continued to the May twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen Planning Commission meeting. Continuing on. Item three B, annexation area number five. Request to annex lots six seven, six eight, west one two two dot nine six of lot sixty-nine, east one eight two dot zero four of lot sixty-nine, seventy A, seventy B, seventy one A, seventy one B, west one hundredth of north one hundred seventy-five of lot seven two, seven three, and south one two two of lot seven two, seven four, lot seven five, and west half vacated nineteenth street, east half vacated nineteenth street adjacent to lots seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-eight, eighty A, eighty B, eighty C, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, south eighty-five of south one hundred and eighty-seven, lot eighty-five, lot north one oh two of south one eighty-seven of lot eighty-five, north one ten of lot eighty-five, eighty-six A two, eighty-six B, eighty-six A one A, eighty-six A one B, eighty-seven, lot ninety, and south half vacated Cary Street, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, east half of lot ninety-nine, one hundred A one, one hundred A two, one hundred A three, one hundred B, one hundred C, one hundred three A, one hundred three B, one hundred six A, one hundred six B, one hundred seven A, one hundred seven B, one oh eight, one twelve, lot one thirteen, and south half of vacated Concord Street. Lot one hundred and fifteen and north half vacated Cary Street, one sixteen B and one seventeen, Child's Estate Acres, lots one, two, one and two, Child's Estate Acres, replat four, lots eighty-six and eighty-seven, Spring Creek, lot one, Bohack Edition, lot one, Scram's East Estate Acres, lot one, and north half vacated Cary Street. And two, Liden Ridge, lots one and two, Amber Acres, lots one and two, Crawford's Edition, replat one, lot one, Hunter's Hollow, lots one through three, Flojo Hauber Estates, lots one and two, Duke's Edition, lots one and two, Proskels Edition, lots one and two, Timmerman Acres, south forty-one of lot one and lot two, Casio's Thoroughbred Acres, lots one, five, six, seven A, seven B, and eight through twenty-seven, Caroline Edition, lot one, Caroline Edition, replat one, replat one, lot two, Rancho El La Estra, tax lot three B, irregular part of tax lot twelve adjacent to lot one, Bohack Edition, part of tax lots twelve and thirteen, located in section twenty-two, township fourteen north, range thirteen east of the Sixth Prime Meridian, and irregular easterly six six five of tax lots, twelve C and fourteen, except part taken for the right-of-way, section fifteen, township fourteen north, range thirteen east of the Sixth Prime Meridian, and all abutting county road right-of-ways. Applicant, city of Bellevue. Any updates?
Okay. We do have two emails regarding this one, one from Chad, I'll say Lichty, at eight nine oh five South Twenty-Fifth Street, and one from Michael and Sandra Stodelska at eighty-two twelve South Nineteenth Street, both in opposition to the annexation. Before we start with the public hearing, I'd like to just briefly talk about annexations in general that apply to all four areas that we're looking at tonight. With the new administration, Mayor Heike has made that a priority to annex a number of areas that are adjacent to the city, and also a number of SIDs that are ready for annexation. Those SIDs will be coming to the Planning Commission at a later date, later this year. Last month, we looked at five areas for annexation. We had a hearing at the council Monday night. So tonight, we are doing the second group of areas for annexation, the unincorporated areas. The administration acknowledges it's a revenue source for the city, but it's also the natural growth and development of the city. The mayor is interested in unifying those areas that are adjacent to the city and making it a, I'll say, a whole city, rather than a lot of areas that are not in the city limits. With regard to some of the questions that were raised at the last hearing, I'll try to address some of those now so that we don't have to go through this all again. The city acknowledges that a number of areas, the streets and other infrastructure are in need of repair and rehabilitation. Upon completion of the annexation, the city Public Works Department will review infrastructure, primarily streets, develop a list of things that need to be done to those, rehabilitate the streets, and develop a plan to implement repairs and rehabilitation. That plan is not going to happen, or that implementation's not going to happen overnight. The needed repairs will be scheduled with the capital improvement plan with other items from the existing city, and will be done over time as resources permit. With regard to sanitary sewer, we realize a number of the properties are on septic systems, not on public sewer. There's, there's nothing in the annexation, or as a result of the annexation, you're not going to be required to tie into a public sanitary sewer. As long as your sewer is working properly, you can keep it. If it fails, and you can repair it on, with, I'll say, on your property, if you need to expand the lateral field or other items, you can repair it in accordance with the rules, you can do that. You won't be made to hook up to city sewer. However, if a sanitary sewer system fails, and you cannot repair it, then your house would be listed as uninhabitable, is not having sanitary sewer, and you can, obviously cannot live in a home that doesn't have sanitary sewer. At that point, you would need to find a public system or some other means of providing sanitary sewer for your property.
Just clarification, Mr. Shuchuk, that's not a change of what is current.
That is correct. Those are the rules now, whether you're annexed or not, does not affect that sanitary sewer criteria. Also zoning, nobody's zoning is changing with this annexation. If you're doing something now legally, you'll be doing it legally after annexation. You're already in our jurisdiction as far as zoning and subdivisions, so yeah, nothing is changing there. I'll try to answer questions as we go along or at the end of it, but if we want to go ahead and start.
Alright. If anyone cares to provide public testimony on this matter, whether in favor or in opposition, please come forward, state your name, and sign in. Can you state your address also?
Eighty-six oh five South Twenty-first Street. What I would like to know is, what is this going to do for our homeowners, the ones that are living there now? It's going to raise the taxes. Oh, we get a free library card, which we have not been accessed to. And we also get to vote for the mayor, which we have not been able to vote for anybody. And are we going to get a representative on the city council? We have had taxation without representation for years, and we have done fine. Snow rebuil is superb with the county. I doubt if this will continue with Bellevue, since there are so many streets. So that is all I have to say. I do not want it.
Good afternoon. My name is Maximino Lopez Leon. I owned lot seventy-two, seventy-three, and seventy-eight of Child's Acres. I'm in opposition. First thing I have to say, I sent the end, a, an email asking what was all this about and anything. Chris, I think it was the person I sent it to, have it with me, no response. So that tells me the city of Bellevue is not really trying to help us. Sorry, but that's really the way I look at it. Ever since I owned those properties, it's about five acres, no service from the city of Bellevue of anything. So we don't get any help. I don't see how that's going to help us. I'm totally opposition unless I'm able to see that, how is it going to benefit us other than just raising our tax? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Before you begin, I respectfully ask everyone, we stopped the clapping, I mean, I'm going to make sure everyone gets a chance to come up here and voice your opinions. Just trying to keep it going smooth. When it's your turn, you're welcome to come on up and express your voice on the record, on, online, on TV. So, sir, I apologize.
My name is Manuela Bunes. I own ninety eighteen South Thirteenth Street and eighteen twenty-six Cornelia. I'm opposed, I'm opposed to that. I guess the way I look at it, we're just going to get taxed, that's all. I don't think we need anything. I, I just, one of the things I was expecting, maybe we're going to get sewer on the streets, which I already heard that it's not going to happen. That was about the only benefit I saw, but I, I think in the long run, I'd rather stay on septic anyways. So I, I really, you know, I just see it, you know, you guys are just trying to get taxes and no benefits. We don't need any more than we have already. We don't really need nothing from you guys, really. I, I mean, I, I believe we're only going to get a light on the street and a library card. That's all we get, so I'm opposed to that. Thank you.
My name is David El Devorik. I live at eighty-three oh two South Twenty-first Street. I've lived there twenty-one years. I moved out of Omaha because the taxes were getting high, it was getting noisy and busy. So I moved into a nice neighborhood. I like the neighborhood. I like the neighbors. They're great people. The only thing I'm not liking now is, is I think we're getting taxed for something we shouldn't be taxed for. In our neighborhood on South Twenty-first Street, we have seven homes that are on sewer, eight homes that are on septic. We have a nineteen-foot wide street that was, when we were down here, when they were putting those new subdivisions in, and we talked to the planning board then, I told them then, I said, I, I saw it in my concrete alongside the street, and the asphalt there that was put in, I don't know when, but they tested the asphalt and said, that street's in great shape. It's thick enough for all the traffic. Well, since we've had those, not any houses built in the subdivisions, but four houses built on the neighborhood, brand-new ones, in the last five years, the street has cracked all, all to pieces. On the curb where I live on the corner, clear down to the south, there's a house that was built on nineteenth street, right on the interstate, all the way, I think it's Gary Street. And then, and there's a new subdivision in there. And from Gary Street to Concord Circle to Rose Lane, to Lindy Circle, to Jerry Street. That's all, that's all new subdivision. Is that subdivision getting annexed also? Are they already annexed now?
They're part of an SID, I believe.
So you can't, you can't annex an SID? Because they owe money? And they're not done building yet?
Correct.
Okay. So that area in there has a lot more amenities than what we have. They have their streetlights, they have curbs, they have storm sewers. I have trouble with my ditchway. I try to keep my yard nice and clean up there. I even mow a pretty steep hill with electric mower to keep my area looking nice. But all the gravel runs off, off of our Twenty-first Street and down into the culvert. In fact, the house across the street's been there three years, and the planning board let them build, and the, I kept telling the contractor, the way they're building the house with the driveway facing me, all that water's going to run down the street, and there's no culvert underneath their driveway, across the street on, they're on Twenty-first and Child's Road also. And all that, all their gravel and all their mud continues to run down and filled up the, filled up the ditchway culvert. But I just can't see paying all the extra taxes, you're going to tax us when they got new areas that have more amenities than what we have, because we don't have anything. Another thing, I, I've been listening to some of the other areas that you are annexing. And I was listening the other night, and the gentleman come up there, and he had a house, it's, I have a two-bedroom house. It's worth about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I have a little bit bigger yard. And they were telling this gentleman with a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, his taxer's going to be nine hundred dollars more. I can't see that. I, I feel terrible for my neighbors that have four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand and more houses down the street, that you have to pay, have to pay all the, Bellevue's full taxes. And I don't know why they're paying full taxes. I, I can see us getting annexed. But the way you people come in there and want to tax, what is it, point six one? Something like that? Is that what it is? That's, and that, your taxing areas, I have, I have a friend of mine that has an all-brick home, it's three-bedroom. He's on thirtieth, he's on thirtieth north of Chandler. I have a big garage I built by my house. Like I said, I have that two-bedroom house, it's eleven hundred square foot. He pays twenty-eight hundred dollars a year taxes, right now. I pay twenty-four hundred. You're going to tax nine hundred dollars more on the mine. I'm going to be up to thirty-three hundred dollars taxes for a little hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. I don't know how somebody's people are going to be able to afford it. It's just, it's ridiculous, the amount of money you want to taxes on this, on this annexation. I just don't think it's right, and I'm not for it. Thank you.
I'm Ted Wiles, lot one fifteen, eighty-seven oh one, South Twenty-first Street. I've only been in the city of Bellevue for about three years. And to agree with everybody else that spoke already tonight, I guess my thing for coming up here is, I guess it's directed at you, Chris, since you're the director, is what benefit do I get out of this annexation? I made the improvements. I bought an acreage that there was nothing. I made the improvements to be able to build the house, okay? There's no streetlights, the curbs are shallow, there's no gutters. I don't even have a water main. I had to drill a well to be able to build the house. So you tell me, other than you taking more money for taxes, what are the benefits to me for the annexation? That's a question to you, Chris.
Why don't we get to that at the end of this? We will discuss the benefits later.
So is there any benefit to it?
Sir, I'll, I'll get to this at the end of the discussion, okay?
So other than the, than the property taxes going up, which the county's already reassessed me twice since I've been there, and I've only been there three years.
Once we're done with the public's hearing, we'll give him a chance to answer all the questions, address all your guys' points. I'll make, I believe that you guys can have another point to add to, if there's time, and kind of go from there, but he will address everyone's questions once the public hearing is kind of gotten it all together so that it's all done as efficiently as possible, we're not all here all night. So, is that okay?
That's fine with the questions. Then to the point of the city council and the mayor. None of us could vote for him. He steps in, and the first thing he does is start annexing people, or trying to. We didn't even get a chance to vote for that mayor or that city councilman, or those city council people. But we have to sit back and allow them to do what they want to us with no benefits. So yes, I am opposed to it. Thank you.
My name is Doug Lawrence. I'm at eighty-seven oh six South Twenty-first Street. I'm the last house on a dead end on Twenty-first Street there. When I built in nineteen eighty, I put the road in from Virginia to where my house is. It was a rock road, but then everybody else started building up the street now, and it's, finally, this county gave us a halfway decent road. It's pretty narrow, but we had a fire on Twenty-first Street. They had to drive in. I have a ninety-four-year-old mother that lives on the street, up, up the street from me. And they had to drive on her, through her yard to get this house. There was one, oh, let's see, I can't remember. It was Joe Hazuka's house. It was a, probably a, at the time, yeah, that's where I am, right there. Further up the street, there was a house right to the south of Virginia Street on Twenty-first Street. And there was a fire. The fire trucks couldn't get down the street, so they had to drive through my mother's yard. Now, that seems like that's a major problem for us in the city. And then I feel like we're going to get zapped, because you're going to put, want to eventually put sewers in, you want to eventually put roads in. Well, we're, you're going to charge us for all that again. I paid for my sewerage, septic tank, and then you're going to come in and start charging us addition. So we got to pay double on road and double on septic tanks. So that, that to me is not fair. I mean, these SIDs that are in there, they only pay once, and we're getting them to pay two different times. So I'm strongly against it. At least you could wait until this other addition goes through, where maybe we'll get some benefit from the additions that are just to the south of me. They, they are, they're selling the houses pretty, pretty fast in there, and eventually they'll connect it to Twenty-first Street, but right now Twenty-first Street is a dead end. So these, all these trucks, they don't realize it's a dead end, and we're getting cement trucks, everything coming down that road, thinking they can get to that addition down there, and they're, they're just mainly destroying our road, what we have there already. So I don't see any benefit you guys are going to give us, and I'm strongly against it. I've got a ninety-year-old, ninety-four-year-old mother that lives up the street on Twenty-first Street, and she's on a fixed income. I'm retired. And she's on a fixed income. I'm retired and, uh. It's just, you're gonna nickel and dime us to death. Thank you, and I'm strongly against it.
I've been patiently listening, oh, my apologies. I'm Gina Arbogast. I live at twenty two oh one Child's Road. And in listening to some of the other conversations this evening before you. I'm hearing what my feelings were before coming tonight. We received a, a single page notification that had no points. On what was changing. We are all interpreting based on our collective experience that we are going to suffer egregiously because of the tax hit. All of us are struggling to try and see from your perception what our benefits are. I've heard the library card. Uh, one of the first thoughts that went through my mind was, uh, Bellevue has city trash. I don't know if that's going to be any. Significant change for what we as individuals have been contracting individually for. I have had outstanding support from the county on snow removal. I had an incident where I had to have first responders re- um, at our home. That was just exemplary. We bought the house in twenty ten and are blessed with wonderful neighbors, but we're sitting on about an acre of land. And our square footage inside the house would put us to where we're gonna get hit really hard with taxes too. And so I would challenge you that when you're sending out these notifications, it would probably facilitate the proceedings. If you gave all of us just points on where your perceived benefits. On this annexation are for us, rather than leaving us to assume. Or try and derive what your expectations are as far as deficits or benefits. From the information that I have right now, I am adamantly opposed. Thank you.
I'm Gene Minders. I reside at, uh, twenty two eleven Cornelia Street. About six years ago, you guys were gonna annex us then too. And you came in and assessed what it was, cost you. For our roads and this and that, and at that time you figured it was, it wasn't economically favorable for the city to annex us. I'd like to know what's changed now. And secondly, you talk about annexing us first and then coming in and assess everything. Don't you think you got that backwards? Shouldn't you come in and check out our roads and everything else? And then decide whether to annex us. Other than that, I am opposed to annexation. And thank you.
My name is Reginald Gillespie. I own lot ninety seven. And I have seen my father's property get annexed, as has my grandfather's property annexed. And the only thing that that got them was worse snow removal, increased property taxes. And sewer taxes that they never got to benefit from because they were on the septic system. I am opposed to the annexation.
Todd Tipperary, nine zero one one, South Twenty Fifth Street, lot, uh, one twelve, Child Estate Acres. You know, it'd be all right if you did raise it and stuff like that. But if you take the money to rebuild Hayworth Park again or something like that, it's just, it's really stupid, you know? As opposed to fixing these guys' roads and stuff like that. Don't tax us to pay other bills that you guys can't pay now. I oppose, that's it.
Uh, Brian Jones, ninety fifteen, South Twenty Fifth Street. Uh, obviously I'm opposed, but my, uh, you guys touched on it a little bit earlier, why you didn't take. Or why you, why you're not annexing Melvin's subdivision. Which is north of me, but my question is, why don't you take in Spring Creek? Spring Creek's sitting at about ninety, ninety five percent sold. Those houses in there are selling anywhere between two hundred and fifty to three hundred grand. Now that's the subdivision south of me. I got about seven acres in there and we always knew it was coming. You guys were gonna take us in. Okay, we understand that. Once again, I don't see what the value we're gonna get from you there. Ver- you know, versus, you know, the higher taxes and stuff. My next one is, the, I'm a VFW member, auxiliary member. What are you gonna do with their road? When Spring Creek was first proposed, it was gonna be a split between you guys, Sarpy County. Spring Creek and the VFW. You guys are gonna bring that road up to, uh, city standards or whatever the deal. If you annex us and annex the VFW down there, you're gonna lose, I would guess, Sarpy County because now it's part of you guys. From what I've been led to understand, Spring Creek is no longer legally responsible for the VFW road. So it's gonna be down to you guys and the VFW and the VFW don't have a lot of money. So basically you're taking that road in all by yourself. So, you know, that's just another, another question I got. I pretty much agree with everything that everybody else said and. Hope you guys don't do it, but it's coming anyway. Thanks.
My name's Ralph Unstead. I live at twelve oh one Casper Street. We're living in a house, we've been in it for forty five years. Was built in, uh, nineteen twelve. And my wife's family's lived in that house ever since. And, uh, we have a lot of neighbors that when I moved in forty five years ago, lots of the neighbors were already living there. We take care of ourselves pretty well. The county's gotten in there, it's done the roads real well. Uh, we take care of our properties. We keep it clean. I have to go and clean, clean the road sometimes. Cause people throw trash when they're driving to Bellevue West or up from the auto places and stuff like that. We have our own septic system. We take care of that. Anything, any repairs on my house, I mostly do myself. Uh, we get along with our neighbors and we like things to stay. If they're, I know you want to change things and I don't think you're gonna get a whole lot of, out of our area. It's hills and you're gonna have to do a lot. We're, we're gonna get old and die one of these days and after that, it's, it could be gone, but. We'd like to stay the way it is right now. We don't need what you're bringing in. Thank you very much.
Sir, I, I would like to point out for the commission that your, your, your property is actually in what we're calling Area Seven.
Yeah.
And, and, well, the rest of the people are talking about Area Five, so they, they can just consider that, what you said, you know, when we get to.
Your Area Seven.
Thank you. I, I wanted to say something anyway.
Mike Nygro, two thousand nine Cornelia Street. I've always considered it Bellevue. I've lived in Bellevue a lot longer than some of you have. I grew up on Bellevue Boulevard fifty eight years ago. So I've seen lots of changes in Bellevue. My wife has MS. She's in a wheelchair. We live on one income. I'm opposed to this because all it's gonna do is cost me money. Thank you. And I agree with what everybody said. Also, if we get annexed, I will run for city council.
Jeremy Harper, eighty four oh six, South Twenty Third Street. Wife and I bought a, bought the house just a, a few years ago and, uh, when we bought it, the, the neighbors had talked to us and said that the. Uh, the new neighborhood to the south of us there, um, that that was not going to connect to the streets. Um, to Twenty Third Street and, uh, maybe even Twenty First Street, but I saw on the map that you had up here earlier that. It does appear that Twenty Third Street is going through to our street and if that is the case, I guess the, I have more questions than. Uh, statements. I agree with everybody's statements here as to the, um, the, the lack of understanding of what the benefits would be to us. So the questions I have would be, are there, you know, gonna be, uh, street signs, uh, stop signs, speed limit signs, lights coming up into our streets? Uh, we've got two little kids that with traffic coming through that neighborhood like that, I could only imagine. Uh, w- the effect that that would have on, uh, our way of life that we get to live right now with the way things are, so. That and. I think that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else for annexation lot number five?
Good evening. My name is Mary Pavel. I live on eighty six ten, South Twenty First Street. And I agree with that lady just saying that would have been nice to get a little more information about. What was, what your plans are for us besides annexation. Let's see, we've lived there for, oh, probably a good fifteen years. And we do have excellent snow removal and I am a nurse and we do have another nurse that lives down the street. And we moved from Papillion into a dead end street and I'm like, I wonder how the snow removal's gonna be on a dead end street, but. Six o'clock in the morning, it is cloud. We can get out and go, which is very nice. The other thing, um. The other thing that we were here back for is when they, um, are building the homes, um. South of us on Twenty First Street. I know we had, came to kinda, we didn't want our road to be. I know that's not on the agenda night, but to go through, I have three boys that are growing up, but we do love that dead end street. Our boys go up and down on their bikes and that kinda stuff. And I know when we got up and we're trying to oppose the houses going up, we lost that battle and the houses are going up. Um, I don't know if it's gonna make a difference, but, um, I just wanna get my vote on the board that I do oppose this too. And I thank you for your time.
Anyone else for? Number five? Alright, this time I, we're turning it over to the. Closing the public hearing. Well, now close the public hearing, turn it over to commissioners?
I, I would like to point out what Mr. Nygro had to say. He's gonna vote and run for city council. That may be one of the biggest benefits you will have coming into the city. I heard several people talk about taxation without representation. First of all, you're not being taxed by the city, uh, property tax wise. So you're not having that issue as far as taxation without representation. You will have representation if you are annexed. You will be able to vote for city council and mayor. Some people do consider that maybe the best benefit they have. Um, otherwise, you'll have city services like any other resident. Uh, police and fire services. Infrastructure, you have an excellent street department who will be taking care of your streets, snowplow. And as I said at the beginning, we will be doing an analysis of all the roads that are annexed. Figuring out what needs to be done to them and then developing and implementing a plan to make those improvements. Those would also include, um. Street signs, street lights, um, just the, the general improvements that would come with a city street. I think several people complained about the streets. Right now they are county streets. So hopefully when the city comes in, you'll, you, you have a, you'll ultimately have a better street than you have from the county now. Somebody asked about trash. Um, yes, you will be part of the city's, uh, solid waste system and pick, being picked up by. Papillion Sanitation and that will be part of your monthly M U D bill. Spring Creek is an SID, a sanitary improvement district. I think they will be one of the ones we will seriously look at. Uh, we're doing these unincorporated lots first. And later this year, we will be looking at, uh, a number of SIDs to annex and Spring Creek is one of those that we will be looking at. One of the gentlemen mentioned Twenty Third Street. That will not go through, at least at this point, by your house. I think, um, if I got your address right. The Twenty Third Street ends pretty much at your house. The, the SID, Spring Ridge will not be improving that between their north boundary and yours. So if, if property ever develops, your property and one across the street ever develops, then that street may go through. It will ultimately go through at some point, but at this point, it will not as part of the Spring Ridge development. Taxes, we did hear about that. Um, yes, taxes will go up. You'll be subject to the city tax levy. It's, it's not as bad as the sixty one cents that people said. You do lose your fire district taxes. It results in a net increase of the mill levy of point four two, four two one seven. Which on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house does add, uh, approximately six hundred and thirty six dollars to the property tax bill. I'll be happy to answer any questions of the commission.
Turning it over to the commissioners. Your thoughts?
Mr. Shuchek, I think one of the comments we received from Mr. Gillespie talked about prior annexations, I think with family members. And they were taxed for sewer even though they didn't have sewer. Is that accurate that there would be a tax for sewer before there's any kind of water or sewer going through?
I, I couldn't imagine that being the case.
Also, there was a question, I believe, from Mr. Jones about the VFW road. If I remember right, when Mel Sudbeck put the new addition on, wasn't there an agreement? If I remember right, when Mel Sudbeck put the new addition on, wasn't there an agreement between Spring Creek, the city, and the new SID that they would take care of that road, a third, a third, a third? Or what would the status of that be with the annexation?
This annexation won't change anything with that road. I don't recall the specifics of the agreement. We did have an agreement with Spring Creek when they were developed initially. We have been told that with the time lapse since that subdivision agreement was initially approved, that it is no longer enforceable. If I recall right, Spring Creek cannot develop their southern area until that road is paved.
You mean Spring Ridge?
Spring Ridge cannot develop their southern area around the, the VFW until there, until that road is paved.
Mr. Shuchek, is that, is Gilmore Lake Road a county responsibility at this point?
Actually, half of it is in the city, half of it is not in the city.
Question for staff. Can you, uh, tell us how many of these areas have the green belt designation?
In this group, there are nine. And there they are up on the, the screen for you. And I believe you have a map and one of your attachments also.
Just a comment, the one gentleman back here talked about, um, why we need to do an assessment ahead of time. The, there is in the staff report, there is, uh, assessment down on the roads. And the Public Works Department is planning a budget of thirty-five thousand per year for the roads just in this area. I, I don't know how much of an assessment was done, but there was some, they were out onsite and they've allocated, uh, estimating thirty-five thousand a year for road maintenance in the area. So they did do some type of pre-assessment prior to, uh, just putting a staff report together.
Thank you, Mr. Arnie, I forgot to mention that. They, they did look at those, uh, what I'm referring to after annexation is a more complete study or analysis of the roads that are out there and a more thorough look at what needs to be done for improvements to them, putting, uh, pen to the paper and establishing costs and, and putting things into a long-term plan.
Follow-up on Mr. Casey's question on the green belt, the lots that were shown in red there, are those actually used for agricultural purposes? Those look like much smaller lots.
Start, start up by, um, Cashell and Corwin. The, the lot with the house. The, the lot with the house and one oh three B to the south of it are green belt. Three that Corwin own, Corwin, uh, the Corwin family, those three are green belt. Go on down, if you would.
No, they do not do agriculture, I live across from them.
The one, here, let me, I'll pull up the map too. This with the new house being built on it is this lot and this lot.
What are those, three acres maybe, two acres, three acres?
Only about two.
Oh, there it is, two point twelve.
And then, go down a little strip. The tiny strip there is a green belt.
Well, I see the name Brian Jones on that one, I guess. Mr. Jones, were you here to testify earlier, if I remember right?
That's an OPBD easement, that's those big high towers. We bought the easement when, when Melvin brought that road around us, that's by seven acres right there.
Right.
Melvin brought that road around us right there, but he had buy the OPBD easement from Twenty-Fifth Street all the way to seventy-three or to South Kennedy. Well, he didn't need this chunk of ground, but the OPBD easement goes all the way from there to the Thirty-Sixth Street Power Station, whatever. So those high towers, the high blocks, the high lines go all the way through there and then they go back. So my guess it is, OPBD must have had it in the, cause back in the old days, every, everything was farmed there.
Right.
Before Spring Creek went in, you know, Smith's farmed all the ground. But I mean, it, it's a strip of ground with a bunch of high towers over top of it, so maybe that's why they had that designated, cause you can't do that. You mow it.
Okay, Mr. Gillespie, I think you were here earlier too. I think one of the names I saw pop up on, uh, green belt, it's only two acres, is that your family? Not used for agricultural purposes?
If, if I might, I, I need people to come up to the mic to get him on the record if they're gonna speak.
I have planted fruit trees and which point I do plan on using it for agricultural and agricultural purposes.
And currently you get the egg, the, uh, green belt status on those?
I have applied with the county, yes, that is correct.
So when you show them on the maps, it's already been granted based on what you've seen on the assessor's site?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any more questions?
I, I didn't get green belt status when the state requires a minimum of ten acres. So how are those lots under ten acres have green belt status?
Mr. Ny, Mr. Nygros, I think that's an excellent question for your county assessor.
I actually, residential estates, I have horses and I do put hay up. And I don't have green belt status because they said I need ten acres.
I understand, that's not something we have jurisdiction over. It's an excellent question. Commissioners, anymore?
Commissioners, from a discussion standpoint, we've got a couple other annexation packages coming that have some rather large tracts of land with green belt. As you know, in March, when we went through the first round of the annexation, I was not in favor of including lots that had green belt. And looking at this map with these lots that have green belt, again, this is not, I don't wanna second guess our Sarpy County assessor, but these are not what I would typically see as, to Mr. Nygros' point, they normally have to be over ten acres. You normally have to be able to make, uh, a profit from active agricultural activities. So how these are currently there versus they got grandfathered in somehow, I don't know. So on this particular annexation package, I will not be renewing the same exception that I did previously, but that will be coming up on others that are more of the agricultural nature. In case you're wondering why I differ on that as we go forward.
I would like to make one comment to the audience. Several times, snow removal was brought up as an issue. And the experience I have in Bellevue as a resident of Bellevue is that our snow remover, all our street department has been excellent. We had a lot of snow this year, we had some ice and we had comments even in the World Herald about how good the snow removal is in Bellevue. So I just want you to be aware of that. And as far as the taxation goes, this committee has nothing to do with taxation. We simply make a recommendation to the city council. The final decisions all come from the city council and you should all know that.
Do any of the commissioners wish to make a motion?
I have a rebuttal question.
Unfortunately, the, um, the public hearing is closed on this.
You said there would be a chance to rebut, anything Chris said.
Uh, I would suggest, I would respectfully request that you wait till the next public hearing on the next lot. I apologize, I misspoke then, I will be honest and say I did misspeak on that.
If we wanted to, we could make a motion to open it again for this, if we just wanna hear what he wants to say.
As I, uh, misspoke, I mean, if you wanna make the motion?
I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing again for this item.
I'll second.
Alright, motion by, uh, Perrin, second by Kane, to reopen the public hearing, do we need to take a vote for that or?
Vote is seven to one, with Smith voting no.
We will reopen the public hearing to allow for additional rebuttals for this item. Do you wanna come to the podium and ask?
Mike Nygros, two thousand nine, Cornelia Street, Bellevue. The question I had on the rebuttal is, you said when the roads go through, they would relook at that at a later time, okay? At what cost to us? Because when I lived on Bellevue Boulevard and they went through and took the rock out of Bellevue Boulevard and went to pave, my parents were assessed for twenty years a paving district. Now, we're already gonna be paying, as you said, on fifty thou, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, an extra six hundred and plus. Mine is two hundred and forty-three thousand dollar house, so I'm gonna be more than that. Who's gonna pay for that difference on the roads? Will we be assessed a paving district after we already paid the taxes? Thank you, that's what I wanna know.
For the moment, yep.
Okay, so, uh, Connie Jones, I'm at nine zero one five, South Twenty-Fifth Street. That strip of land next to the green belt designation. I guess my question right now is, um, trash, is that trash gonna cost me more? Because we contract ourselves, we pick who we wanna be with and I can call and I can bargain with them and I can get my trash lower than my next door neighbor and then he calls and he bargains. So can I call and bargain with you? Because right now, I'm only paying, well, maybe I don't wanna tell you that because I'd like to pay less, actually. So if you'd like to know, you can ask me. Is this coming to a vote or is this just gonna be, we're gonna stick it to you? In the long run, after we get done talking about this and, and making decisions. I would like to see a side-by-side of my tax description, tax rates now. I can show you now and I would like to see a side-by-side with this printed out with what it's going to be and any new descriptions set beside it, I would like to see side-by-side. I'm the tax, I'm the bill payer and I wanna know and I wanna get prepared for what am I gonna be paying. I'm retiring, so I'm gonna be on the fixed income and I wanna know what's coming at me. So I would like to see a side-by-side, I wanna know what's gonna be added to this nice little description right here. And I wanna know the tax rate, I wanna know the tax amount and I wanna know the previous, that's what I wanna see. Everything else, I think people have said, my biggest question, and I think these people's biggest questions also right now is, why now? Why now? Why, after I've been sitting down there for thirty-five years when nobody was around me and we were nice and quiet? And now everybody wants to build in what we call God's country? All of a sudden you want to take us and add more money to our taxes? And I know the state is having the same problem because I'm following that too. I'm tired of the property tax people being held accountable for the money that cities need and I would like to see you go about it in a different way. Raise my sales tax, I'm fine with that. I can spend less than somebody else, if they wanna spend more, they can pay more in sales tax. But let's get off of the property tax people, alright? Benefits, sure, there's some benefits. Curbs, make me some nice pretty curbs, give me some nice pretty lights. Now I can have a library card, cause I've griped about this in the past. Now I can have a library card because my daughter has now already graduated high school four years ago and while she was in high school, was not allowed to use the public library. Even though she was a public, a Bellevue public student, she was not allowed to use the library unless we paid for a card. But she's already gone now and you, now you wanna give me a library card, so I'll pass on that. You can give me back the thirty-five dollars or whatever that is. I'm curious about what other kind of additional rules and laws will follow with this. I don't wanna tell you everything that happens on my property, but you can sure come down and visit me. Alright, cause there are some things that I have that I know my friends who live in the city can't have. So I wanna know what additional rules and laws are gonna follow you taking me in. And I believe that's about it.
Uh, Mr. Thomas, you mentioned about, uh, green belt. I own seventy-two, seventy-three and seventy-eight and I've, uh, altogether about five acres and I farm about three of them. So that is ag and, you know, really happy doing that. I, I have lots of pictures and I'm sure my kids love it, I got one of them, you can ask him, thank you.
I just forgot to sign earlier.
Okay.
Sorry.
In the meantime, I'm gonna close public hearings so that staff can address the questions that you guys brought up during the rebuttal. Staff?
The, the cost of any road improvements has not been determined at this point. As I said earlier, uh, full-bone study will be done after annexation to determine what needs to be done, uh, put a cost to them and get them scheduled in our capital improvement plan. The city typically in the past has not, in, in the twenty years I've been here, has not done a street district where they were assessed. They have done it with sewer in one time that I'm aware of. Uh, but typically, street improvements are paid for through the city's general fund, budgeted in the capital improvement plan. What happens in the future is unknown, the council may at the time, uh, choose to assess that or they may just do it from general fund, but if you are in the city, you at least have a vote, uh, on your council member. Trash pickup, you will be part of the city's trash program. Those rates are determined by the size of the can you, you have. There's a small, a medium and a large, there are different rates for those. I don't know those rates off the top of my head and I don't know how much you pay, so I, I don't know. Um, if you call our wastewater department, they can certainly tell you, um, how much trash would be. The cit, the city, um, the, the planning commission does not set tax rates. I can tell you that on your tax bill that you have, you will lose the Eastern Sarpy Fire District, um, taxes. There are two of them, there's a, and I think a general and a bond, you will lose both of those. You will add the city tax rate of point six-one. And it comes to a net of, uh, I said, point four-two, four-two-one-seven is the difference. The, the city or the planning commission doesn't do taxes. If you'd like to address taxes, the, the council will hold a hearing on this item in, uh, it will prob, looks like it will be on May twenty-first and you'll get a notice again regarding that. So they're the ones that set taxes and there were other things that you mentioned as far as sales tax and whatnot that are beyond the city's purview as well. So there, there aren't things that the city council or planning commission can handle. New laws, um, one of the reasons we are looking... New laws, one of the reasons we are looking at annexation is because some of the nuisance laws that are in our city code do not apply to areas outside the city. So, those laws would apply if you have a nuisance. You may be getting a, a visit from code enforcement if somebody complains about it. One of the things I know we've had issues with up on Chandler Road, which is not in this particular area, are people firing guns. You cannot fire a gun in the city limits, but that area along Chandler Road was outside the city limits, and the city cannot enforce its rules on firing guns outside the city limits. There are some other things like that. As I said earlier, your zoning does not change. So, if you're doing things regarding zoning now, and you've been doing them legally, that is not going to change. So, I, you know, I, I don't have an exhaustive list of what might change but not, but as far as those types of things are concerned, I don't think you'll see a big change.
Turning it back over to commissioners, what are your wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve annexation area number five based upon positive financial impact on the city and the natural growth and development of the city.
Second?
Alright, we have a motion by Mr. Arne, and second by Ms. Smith.
All voted yes, motion carried.
Alright, this item will go to the city council republic hearing and on May twenty-first, twenty nineteen. Onto the next public hearing.
The council is changing their meetings. That'll be a Tuesday night, May twenty-first. They start at six o'clock.
If anyone from annexation five wants to leave, please feel free. Want to go to Mara, this is going to be a long one for me to read again. Agenda item three C, annexation area number seven. Request to annex lots two, four, five, six, A one, six, A two, seven, eight, nine, ten, twelve B, twelve C, thirteen A one, thirteen B one, fourteen A, fifteen A, fifteen B, fifteen C, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-one A, Old Orchard Place, Lot Three, Old Orchard Place one, lots one and two, Old Orchard Place two, lots one and three through three. Old Orchard Place three, lots one and two, Old Orchard Place replat one, lots four and five, High School View. Lots one and two, Vosik Edition, lots one and two, Vosik's Second Edition, Lot Fifty-nine, Except Part Two Road, and Lot Sixty, Except Part Two Road. Child's acre, child's estate acres, tax lots eight B one and twelve A one, located in Section Twenty-two, Township fourteen north, R thirteen east of the Sixth Prime Meridian, and tax lots eleven dash two A, eleven dash two B, and east fifteen of tax lot sixteen A, located in Section Fifteen, Township fourteen north, R thirteen E of the Sixth Prime Meridian, and All Abutting County Road, right of ways, applicant City of Bellevue. Staff, any updates?
We have letters, one there's a standout this evening from James Lawrence, Lana Lawrence and James Lawrence the third. Another one from Ralph Unstad, Laurel Unstad, and Jackie Stover in opposition to them. These are all provided to the planning commissioners.
Alright, this time, if anyone cares to provide public testimony on the matter, whether in favor or in opposition, please come forward, state your name, and sign in.
Manuela Wundis, I guess I, I shouldn't say anything, because, did I hear, I'm sorry, I'm going to go back. You guys approved the other one, is that what I heard?
We approved it to go to city council on May twenty-first.
You want anyway, so why, why are we here then? Why do you guys make meetings then? I mean, you guys heard everyone, everyone is opposed. You guys still approve it, so it really doesn't matter.
Good evening commissioners. If, Tammy, could you pull up, it would be on the Vosik on Thirteenth Street?
I apologize, can you state your name for the record, the verbal record?
I thought I did, Patrick Sullivan. I'm trying to find.
The Vosiks, oh, they go up to the top there along Virginia. Those.
Right there. Okay, he's not even asked me to be here, he just happens to be a client of mine, and I happened to see this pull up. He had a heart attack a couple of weeks ago. This is probably not on his radar. But that is a working farm. I mean, working farm from the standpoint that he lives and works on that farm. And I can't imagine that ever being developed into anything else. It's just, location-wise and otherwise, I don't see that being anything other than a farm. And literally, lives and works it, that's all he does, is that farm there. And he'll lose green belt status on that farm, and just for point of clarity, the way Green Belt works is they'll go through and they'll look in what I call farm country, that's not subject to the pressures of the metropolitan area real estate market. And they look at soils, and they'll look at soils, and they'll say, this type of soil in, let's say Columbus area, is the same type of soil here, and that ground sells for four thousand an acre out there. Then they'll tack, then they'll put a value on it for green belt purposes of four thousand. Then, because it's being farmed, it gets taxed at seventy-five percent of that. If it gets annexed into the city, which it is completely farm in nature, and is not going to change, it then gets taxed at the pressured value, if you will, of the metropolitan area, where somebody may want to buy this and be a gentleman farmer, they're not going to buy it to develop it. And then, that higher value then gets taxed, but if you continue to use it as, as a farm, it's seventy-five percent of that higher value. But the end of the day is, this property's never going to change. There might be a small chance that that development to the west could maybe at some point pull the pieces west of Thirteenth Street at some point. But everything on the east side of Thirteenth Street isn't even, because of its terrain and so forth, it just is not even good for development. And I'm surmising that my client, if he was healthy, would be adamantly opposed to this annexation. Thank you.
So that everybody can understand, Mr. Vosik owns the one that's highlighted, the two below it. That one, the next one, and the one to the west, the top one over to the west, that one.
Total of about fifteen acres, what it looks.
I'd say it's just over fifteen acres with all of them.
I'm James Lawrence. I live at ninety-one hundred South Thirteenth Street. You all have my letter there, I brought it this evening. You can take a look at it. And some of this stuff is going to been, gone over, but a lot of it hasn't. So, I'm just going to read this letter so everybody can hear it. This whole area is in, is acreages, where you can raise some cattle, horses, chickens, ducks, plant a crop, plant a large garden, or whatever you want. This area has been like this for many years. I have been on my acreage for seventy-eight as my father and my grandmother, my grandfather have been before me. Everyone does not want to live in a development where everybody lives twenty feet from their neighbor. People that have moved into the area did so to have an acreage to grow, pardon, grow garden, raise some chickens, or have a couple of horses, or whatever. If Bellevue annexes this area, along will come the rules of the city, and everything we have will var, vanish. No cattle, no horses, no chickens, no ducks, no crops, no anything. I see no reason for the City of Bellevue wanting to annex this area except to raise our taxes, and we do pay our share of taxes. I certainly do. Maybe we'll get a library card or garbage pickup, which we have private garbage pickup, which we have no problems with. No city sewer available, as we have, all have septic tanks, which we've had for years, and in most cases, we could not hook up to the sewer because of the location. Water service, no city water service has, as in nineteen seventy, I personally collect all the cash needed to pay for the water service brought down Thirteenth Street. Police protection, I believe the City of Bellevue has a fine police department, and I know some of the force and are very good people. I also know the Sarpy County Sheriff's Department that has the same quality of personnel, and they do a fantastic job overseeing the county. The question remains, why do you want to annex this area except to increase taxes to us, to the city? I see no reason for this. Thank you very much, and I strongly object to this annexation.
Jim Maruz, nine zero one seven, South Thirteenth Street. I think it's lot number five. What I'm concerned about, I understand we're going to get trash pickup, but I thought trash pickup was included in our tax bill, so I don't understand why we have to pay for trash, trash pickup if it's in our taxes. Speeding, that road there, since they opened up Bellevue West High School exit, it, we, we call the sheriff now and then, but someone's going to get hurt bad, because there's no way to put sidewalks on Thirteenth Street. Kids walk home from school. My brother was parked at the bottom of the hill just a couple of weeks ago. Someone rear-ended him, pushed him into Mr. Vosik's property, and he, he's luckily, he's okay. But you're going to have to do something about the speeding, and it's probably be Bellevue Police now, but it's pretty bad. And the kids walk home, there's no, no way to put sidewalks there. There's, it's impossible. Centennial Road, I'm concerned about Centennial Road. Is it, is there ever a plan for it to go through there? I, I don't understand, on the other side of Kennedy Freeway, it, I don't, I'm not familiar with that area, but I hate to see it go through, because it's going to be right in my, right next to my yard. Burning permit. Right now, I can get a burning permit. I called the fire department, he says, no more burning permit for you. So, I mean, I have a lot of acreage. I know I can take it to the tree dump, but I'd like to know if, if that's true, am I going to lose my chance to get a burning permit? They come out, they inspect my pile of, someone, I'm going to burn, and then I burn it. Zoning, I'm zoned agriculture, is it still going to be okay to have a horse? You know, once I have a horse, a cow, I've even had a pig there, and chickens. I want to know if that's still going to stand, if that's going to be okay. Bellevue West property, I don't understand why that's being annexed in. The Bellevue West School property, they show Thirteenth Street continuing on down, and it doesn't. It turns at Casper there. I don't understand why they should continue to show it go through. You know, they put a three-way stop sign there, which was lucky, because as far as I was concerned, Bellevue West kids were coming out on a, to, out of private property. You don't need a stop sign on private property, you need to stop. And so, they put a three-way stop there, so that helped. And I really don't want a street light. I don't know if they're going to put them there, but we've got a nice, we've got a nice stretch of land there, and we all like it. And I like the dark. I don't want a street light, if we can help it. I don't, if you guys are in the planning department, plan that, but I don't want a street light. Hunting, I know some people, they're allowed to go down and bow hunt on the bottom of my property there. I've got a lot of treat area, and they bow hunt turkey and deer. Is that, it's still going to be okay? And I think that's the only questions I have. You know, I don't really want to see it go through, but it is what it is. But I just don't understand the trash pickup. I thought that's included in our tax bill, but apparently not. Okay, thank you.
Joyce Maruz, nine zero zero five, South Thirteenth Street. I'm the one that was vaulted into Jim Vosik's field, hit by a car. And I live next to, our property is next to Mr. Vosik's to the south. Actually, Jim Maruz, Vosik, our property and then Jim Maruz, we're all right next to each other. My concern are farm animals. Right now, Mr. Vosik has milk cows on his property. What's going to happen with those? We have chickens, we usually have sheep, especially this time of the year. We've always had farm animals of some sort. We've had a llama, we've had pretty much any kind of animal you can think of. And that is my huge concern, that now I'm going to lose my right to have any kind of farm animal that I want. Obviously, it's never disturbed the, you know, anyone in the neighborhood. We've never had anything as obnoxious as a peacock. But that is my huge concern, that we're going to lose our, right now, we're zoned light agriculture, and we're going to lose that status. And I really don't understand how you could take in Mr. Vosik's property, because he is a farmer. He, you know, he farms that plot on the east side, and he also farms the plot on the west side. So, that, the farm animals are my huge concern. I'm absolutely opposed to it, because I see absolutely no benefit that we will receive at all, none. I mean, I can pay for my own trash pickup, and I agree with the lady after my son graduate, you know, he's gone and whatever, he went to Bellevue Public Schools and, you know, yeah, now I can get a free library card, big deal. But I am a hundred percent opposed to it, especially with the, the green belt status with most of us. Thank you.
My name is Laurel Unstad, twelve oh one Casper, Old Orchard Place lots one and three. My grandchildren are the sixth generation that come into our house. Many of our neighbors enjoy the living of hobby farming, enjoying the wildlife in this area. We need green spaces for the wildlife that God created to share this world with, not walled wall houses and dwellings filling every green space and crowding them out. We do not wish to have our taxes raised little by little to force us to let go of our land for the city's benefit. You must plan for the future. We are, when we are gone, which we will be, you may need this very land for another school, playground, or park. If it is filled with houses, apartments, then the option will no longer be there. I believe you should include in the Bellevue area places for different living styles, and this should be one allowed for, besides the norm of small and large houses, apartments, duplexes, trailers, et cetera. We are happy the way we are and have been for some time, and are against the annexation. Thank you.
My name is Aaron Belts, twelve oh three Casper, and I pray to God I got the courage to talk, 'cause I'm very antisocial. I don't want people around me, I don't like it. I really don't, I'm just saying. I did write a letter, most people touched on everything I was gonna say, but I'm gonna read it anyways, and it has a lot to do with the mayor and him being a realtor, and this is why it's happening, in my opinion. I think there might be some other personal friends of his that would like our land, more than the city. And if you wanna raise my taxes six hundred bucks, why don't you just give us a, a grant, and we'll take care of our own stuff, like we do now? Annex us, just give us the money, and we'll take care of it. We don't need the snow removal, the county does fine. We don't need the water, we got wells, we don't need the septic, we can, excuse me, get very nervous talking in front of people. We don't need a sewer line, we have septics. We don't need street lights, we like the dark. We, Thirteenth Street, or Casper Street where we live, Linda lives across the street, her property is freaking awesome to sit on the front porch and watch. There's deer over there, there's turkeys over there, there's foxes over there. There's all kinds of freedom and peace and just quiet. It's great for a guy like me. I've lived there for fourteen months, and I, why would I pay Bellevue six hundred dollars a month for nothing? I won't go to the library, my son's kid, my son is gone. I, I don't get this. I understand expansion, but I know it's for real estate reasons. It has nothing to do with Bellevue expansion. Bellevue has plenty of room to go south. They have plenty of room to go, well, not by the base, but they, there's plenty of room to grow, grow towards Platts, or Plattsmith. Plenty, you don't need our little section. You can leave it alone. I don't understand why we even do this, 'cause all this Todd Ernst guy's gonna do is say, motion, and you're gonna second it, sue, and then it's gonna get going to City Council anyways. I do not agree with this at all. And yes, if we get annexed, I will run for City Council, I will try to push whoever votes for this out, not City Council, well, you guys, I can't, but City Council. I would also like to know where I can get minutes of this, so if we do get annexed, I can push for removal, or whoever, or do whatever, and put a big ol' stakeout. I don't agree with this, none of us do with our little area. Linda Unstead is a very quiet person, it took a lot for her to come up here and talk, a lot, more than me, I bet. Kathy, my neighbor, she's got her own issues too, we talk, we get along great. We don't want people living across from us, or behind us, or beside us. That's why I bought the house fourteen months ago, and you wanna annex me and raise my taxes? I pay enough. Six hundred dollars a month, give me a grant, I'll take care of the damn street. Thank you. So what I did, I ran equipment for years and years, I can do it, give me the equipment, I'll park it in my backyard, I wouldn't care, I'll plow the street, I'll put up signs, what do you want me to do? Give me the money, don't take it from me.
Hello, my name is Kathy Zach at twelve oh five Casper. I've lived in my home for twenty-five years. I bought the home because it had a septic, it had a well. It's a half acre, there's so much wildlife in my area, I see every day, and I'd like to know, with city all the way around, as where is the wildlife gonna go? I feed them all winter. I bought this house because of what it is, and now I feel like you wanna take it away from me, or it's gonna cost me more to stay there. I oppose this also, thank you.
Hi, I'm Linda Hagman Lee. I am trustee for the ten twelve Casper Street area. And the history of this is this part that's in the, what is it, the green, whatever. And the history of it is a horse farm, and in the past, we have raised, my parents moved there in seventy-five, they've raised and bred horses, they've boarded horses, and I occasionally end, pretty much, pasture horses now. And the house is, you probably know, this property's been up for sale probably thirty years. We have sold it two times, my parents backed out because they didn't want to leave it. And we've had developers go through the land and walk it, they have not bought it for two reasons, no, three. One is the land really isn't good for development, I think that was said before. And I have been very protective of the land, because I just feel it needs to be of good use to the city and to the country, and it's a big enough property that I feel a big responsibility for it. Third reason. Developers are looking at the economic development of Bellevue. It's not particularly advantageous for them to build a two hundred fifty, three hundred thousand dollar house, when you've got South Omaha moving into Bellevue. And I guess I'm gonna get a little bit peeved now. In sixty-two, when we moved here, Bellevue was the place to live, you know that. And since then, poor planning on the city's part, the reduction of off at Air Force Base, Bellevue is going down, and, and the city needs money to keep up with what it is. And we'll, we'll go on. No, I, I'll speak on that real quick. You all have had planning, and you plan for the city, but it never goes through. You have the downtown district, you had on the internet plans to develop downtown, where did it go to? You had money to redevelop the library system, you spent it all on planning, and yet, there's no library, not even improvement of what we have. What you do in planning has to be to, what about the cement factory? You were gonna do something down by the railroad, took all that cement out, what happened to that? You were gonna do a baseball camp, what happened to that? Maybe you need to have a planning director for this city, okay, that's enough of that. I guess the other part, and I'm gonna end it, you all stood up just a little while ago, and you pledged allegiance to liberty and justice for all. And you've got these people from this whole roomful of people that do not want to be annexed by Bellevue. I think you've heard it over and over again. And we know from the example, you're going to go boop, 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 and you're just gonna take it to city, city is gonna go boop, 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 and there is where you're getting money. Where are you gonna run out of getting land? Let's see, has it been five years ago that you decided to sell all the, the land the city owned? They got in trouble with that? Eventually, you're gonna run out of land to take from people, and that's basically what you're doing. So, thank you.
Ma'am, would you?
Ten twelve Casper Street.
Thank you.
And my name is Linda Hagman Lee. And I'm not a public speaker either. Well, I have to say, there's a right and a wrong way to do this, and Bellevue is my city, I graduated from Bellevue, and I really wish that this can, the council and the planning commission would start looking at our city, it is such a unique city, and how to make that so people will come here. That's our problem. Thank you.
Good evening, Patty Rube, ninety fourteen, South Thirteenth Street, we also own ninety ten, South Thirteenth Street. We, my father-in-law owned this land and gave us an acre for us to raise our children. Our children are grown, it's, now I have grandchildren, and if you viewed my security camera on Easter, we had a big Easter egg hunt in our orchard, we do have an orchard on the land. My concern is that, I know we, I know Bellevue needs to plan, you need to, to get tax dollars, the information, what is, how is it going to affect us? And also, when, when will this go into effect? I've read the minutes from the previous board meetings, they said with the two thousand twenty tax rolls, it would go into effect, but I'm wondering, when is the actual date? I mean, for planning purposes? Sales tax will go up on us, we're currently in county tax only, no, no city tax. The, we have to arrange for our trash to stop so that we can go on the city's trash program. I understand that, my question also is that we have a rental house, we have two properties, one is ours, one's the rental house with the extra acreage. Am I going to now have to pay trash for both locations, even though I, I currently only have trash cans at one house? Am I gonna have to add a trash can for that too, so my trash bill's gonna double? And my renter doesn't have that much trash, he's a single guy, he doesn't do anything. Who do I call when the high school kids are speeding down my street every morning at seven-thirty in the morning to get to school? I call the county, they come out, they sit in my driveway, they issue tickets, they stop speeding for a couple of weeks, then it happens again. It's twenty-five miles an hour, it is hard to do twenty-five miles an hour down the hill and back up the other side. The county's been very conscious of coming out and taking care of this for us. As I said, my children are grown, I used to have to stand out there on the street and protect my daughter to get on the bus every morning. The bus driver would turn people in weekly for going around him to get to school. When we built our house in two thousand and two, we knew this was gonna happen at some point. But just when and why, and how is it going to affect us going forward? People have alluded to the, the changes of the coating, the nuisance calls, the subdivision behind us, Hawks Ridge, we're cleaning trash out of our field every week, when the wind blows good, we're picking up people's lawn cushions out of their place. We've got an easement against the back of our field for their drain, for their road drainage. Is that in the city's planning, is that something I'm going to have to take care of in the future? Is it gonna be, since, if, when, when we're annexed, will that be something the city will help us to get fixed in the future? Let me see. And you had mentioned, we'll be under the city's codes for things. We do things a little differently out in the, our little country estates. I have an old beehive back there, I have firewood piled up, we have a wood burner in our house. Are those things that I'm going to now get code violations against in the back? If my wonderful new neighbors in that subdivision back there start complaining about my piles of old machinery back there, am I going to get a code violation for that? We put a pool in some years ago, and we had teenage kids in the house, and we had to put a fence around it, 'cause the code, people came out and gave, told us we had to put a fence with the gate. People down the street had their pool right out in the middle of their driveway, no code violation. Where's the enforcement gonna come from? We'd call the county, they said it was the city, we'd call the city, they say you're in the county. You know, are we gonna get more representation now because of this? And then, as mentioned before, we'll now be able to vote for the mayor and the city council. I'm not for sure, and I haven't looked it up, what ward are we gonna be in, who's gonna be our representative? Are they gonna come introduce themselves? Because we don't know these people, we weren't allowed to vote for them, we, we had no idea who they are, so that's all my many questions, thank you.
I'm Don Rube, ninety fourteen and ninety ten, South Thirteenth Street. You know, I don't have a lot to say, this, this, you could just tell this is a done deal. I remember when we fought, them putting the subdivision in, and it was just like blowing smoke, so, you know, for you to sit there and tell me, and tell us, that you guys got nothing to do with the taxes, that's like the guy that just got sentenced to death asking the, the judge, what, what are you doing that for? Oh, I got nothing to do with that, the executioner will take care of that. And I am against it.
Good evening, Jackie Stover, eighty-nine ten, South Thirteenth. I've already addressed in an email to the department here, but I would like to add one comment, I agree with everybody that has spoken the previous annexation package with what most of those people said. But the one thing I found really disheartening was when I opened my Bellevue leader, and I read the article that was written about the mayors meeting together, and all of a sudden, here's Rusty Hype's name in, who we were not, we have no control over voting, excuse me, I'm catching a cold, for voting for, but he's bragging how through this, all these annexations, he's gonna bring the city dollars, the amount of people he's gonna bring in, so we can get up here and speak all we want, but we know what's gonna happen, and it's, but it's really disappointing to see that's already in black and white, that this is a done deal. And I just find it very disheartening. Thank you. I apologize again, my voice is.
Good evening, Larry Kane, eighty-nine ten, South Thirteenth. Most of, everything's been covered already, a lot of the stuff as far as taxes, you know, nobody wants their taxes to go up. Most of, everything's been covered already, a lot of stuff as far as taxes, you know, nobody wants their taxes to go up. Myself, uh, I'm fortunate enough to be retired, so I'm pretty much on a fixed income. So where am I supposed to come up with the extra eight hundred, nine hundred dollars a year for taxes? They won't hire me at Walmart, cause I'd make them take the cart, and they said, no, you can't do that, so then. All the positions that Fazoli's were taken, where you hand out the breadsticks, they won't let me do that, so. I'm pretty much uh, I'm losing my eyesight, so I can't apply for a job anywhere really. If you look at that map, Hawk Ridge pretty much encompasses our area. We're, we're like, we're in this little pocket right in the middle of Hawks Ridge. Where I live anyway. And uh, I don't, I don't know why they wouldn't wait until they did Hawks Ridge to do that little. Piece right in the middle there, but anyway, when we first moved out there in ninety-one. And uh, none of that was there, it was beautiful out there, it was nice, like a country setting and. You could go down over the hill down onto Fort Creek and South Roads was still going back in them days, it's pretty much gone now. Far as the city of Bellevue, I don't think they have a very good track re- record of uh, taking care of their people. Years ago, there was a trailer court there on Fort Creek, right when you come in from uh, Omaha there. Well, they went in there condemned that and made all those people move out of there, and they were poor people, uh, people like retired people. Uh, and those trailers were old, uh, they kinda said more or less it was an eyesore and they didn't want people coming into Bellevue. Uh, seeing that, so I don't know where those people moved to. Uh, but I know at the time, they go to the city. And the city told them to go to the county, and they went to the county, and the county told them to go to the city. So it was just this big circle, and I, and I would imagine. A lot of those people probably moved down there to Paradise Lake, or that other trailer court, I don't know the name of it, down there at the bottom of the hill. Yeah, and uh, so now, those people, the same, probably some of the same ones, I imagine. They're getting those places, they're gonna be condemned, they're gonna bulldoze them. Where do they go now? To me, uh, Bellevue doesn't really look out for their citizens, I don't think. Another instance, uh, here, a few years ago, there was a flood in Bellevue and the sewer backed up. And people had sewage in their houses down there, right just uh, east of the basin. Uh, sewage in their houses for weeks or more, I don't know. And they went to the city and they said, city more or less says, well, you're on your own, that, that's your problem. We'll, we'll take care of, we'll do the sewer, but you're, as far as your house goes, you're on your own. Now, I didn't, I didn't think that was right. To me, people should, the, usually people in Nebraska, they're so good about helping one another, you know. Uh, like with the floods, these recent floods and everything. Can't read them all right in here. Oh, another thing. The city Bellevue spent, I believe it was around seventy-five thousand dollars doing a study. For a Bellevue corridor coming in from Fort Creek. That's part of where that trailer court was. That's vacant property sitting there now. They, they put in all these restrictions on what they, what they'll allow to be built there, what they won't allow to be built there. I know one friend of mine was gonna put in a boat repair shop. And this guy has fun, a lot of money, you know, that he can, he was gonna build a real nice. Place, real nice fronting on there. They turned him down. And then you got uh, the coarse lab down there where the cement plant used to be, that's vacant property. You got that place at the end of Mission there where that place was, that's, they condemned that, tore that down, that's sitting there vacant. They have all this vacant property sitting around, and, but they won't, so I don't know what the deal is, they don't let people build on it unless, because of all their restrictions. And I don't think Bellevue, sometimes they don't spend their money wisely. When they started having uh, Hawk Ridge was gonna be put in there. I really started watching the city council meetings and kinda, you know, seeing how things were going. Uh, some of the money they spend, I don't, I, I think they bought like fourteen. Uh, video deals for the, the police to do uh, uh, interviews. How many interviews they do at one time, four, do they fo- do fourteen at once? Anyway. They put it, they spent eighty-five thousand dollars painting. Fort Creek and I don't know what else, putting in bike trails or bike lanes. I've never seen one bicycle on there, not one. And I don't know how many years that's been, I've never seen a bike on there. What a waste of money. One positive thing, I'm hoping maybe, if, I'm sure we'll get annexed, but one positive thing that I would like to see happen. They talked about the kids coming out of the school, uh, Bellevue West. They come out, they get on Thirteenth. I had the sheriff come out there a couple of different times, somebody's gonna get killed out there. And uh, I think he said the sixty, it was either sixty-seven or eighty-seven miles an hour they were doing down that street. It's a twenty-five mile an hour zone. I've seen them drag racing side by side. When they come out of school, they'll drag race down Thirteenth. That street's only twenty-one feet wide. They'll be drag racing down that street. Call the sheriff, they'll come out, maybe the next day or maybe whenever. And then you don't see them again unless you call, I mean, if you called them every day, maybe they might come out every day, I don't know. But uh, I went to the county, tried to get a stop sign put in on Thirteenth Street. Uh, there's one on Alberta coming, going east, but I suggested they put one on. Either side of Alberta on Thirteenth, and that'd be right in the middle of that drag strip coming down there, and maybe that would slow them down. Possibly, if we get annexed, maybe Bellevue would take a look at that and maybe possibly put a stop sign in there, that would really help a lot. Maybe you might, it'll slow some of them down, I'm sure not all of them, but.
Um, just wanna make sure you get all your points, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it and uh, I hope, I hope they don't do that. I don't know if any of you people live in the areas that are being annexed or not, but uh, I think. You people should represent people's wishes or what people want and. I don't know if people think that you're doing a greater good or, or what, you know, but uh. Everybody that I've seen, I haven't seen anybody up there that's in favor of it, so, uh, thank you.
Hi, Carolyn Pasposil, twelve oh seven Casper Street. Can you pull the green belt up again? Unlike the comments that were made during number five, I just wanna point out that the number, the green belt areas that are listed here really are being used for agricultural. As Mr. Sullivan pointed out earlier. Um, none of those are in my lot, and I'm okay with that. But I just wanna make sure that you're aware of that before you do this annexation.
Okay, I'm already signed in, I came up at the wrong time, but my wife did a much better job of talking to you than I did. I wanna thank you for all being re- for being respectful and listening. Um, the people here are the roots of the city, they're the roots of the county and the roots of the area around here. And they're trying to keep things going. That's what we're trying to do. We have uh, a little bit of prairie in our back pasture. It's uh, my son worked on the prairies out in western Nebraska, he graduated from college here in, in Omaha and uh. He's got prairie plants out there, and I don't know, we get taxed for those. Uh, I just want, wanna thank you all and I, and I really feel all these people back here, they're the roots of the county. And their families go way back, almost all of them. Thank you.
Seeing no one else for number seven, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it over to staff and commissioners to.
If you annex this land, this area, will I be able to keep my horse farm?
Yes.
Okay, because I just advertised it as a horse farm, it didn't work as development. So now it's back to a horse farm. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, try to answer some of the questions or comments that came up. Mister Maru's, um, no plans for extending centennial through to your area, that's um. That is all the OPPD easement, there's big power lines there, I don't see how a road can get through there. It was put in, kind of, I'll say in a gap over on the other side of the freeway. Um, but there is no plan to come across the freeway and into Thirteenth Street and it, and it doesn't have a place to go really. If it did come across um, the street. Um, hunting, although hunting is not allowed in the city, the, the council regularly approves hunting waivers. For hunting in the city, so that, that is something that goes through our police department. So um, as the time comes for hunting, you may not, you may want to check with the police department on. On applying for a waiver for hunting in the city limits. Individual property owners pay for trash removal, it's not part of your city taxes, Omaha's the only city that. Um, they're, they're actually required to provide service, trash service to their residents. In Bellevue, the city contracts with, with the population sanitation, and it's on your M U D bill monthly. Uh, so that's how that is paid for. For uh, Joyce Maru's, uh, Ms. Maru's, um, the animals that you have now, your zoning's not gonna change. You can keep those, um, I believe your zoned ags, animals are allowed there. I would say the same thing for Mr. Vasek's property as well. Uh, those who talked about wildlife, nothing that happens tonight or with the annexation. Will do anything that will in itself affect wildlife. You, it, the, it changes the, the city limits line, it, it doesn't do anything to the trees, the. Prairies, the, you know, the, the, the wild areas or the wild animals. Um, if somebody comes in and develops, and that's whether it's in the city or not, it could displace wildlife, but again, that has nothing to do. With annexation. For Ms. Root, um, the effective date of an annexation would be fifteen days after the city council passes the ordinance. Um, so right now, we're looking mid to the end of June for that date. I don't know what to tell you about the easement, I'm not aware of the easement in your backyard or what's there, so. Um, if it's a drainage easement, um, coming out of Hawk Ridge. That might be something to discuss with our public works department, um, once you're in the city. And you also asked something about code enforcement, um, again, the, the city has a code enforcement department who can. Address issues that you might be having. You hit on one of those topics that uh, is a re- one of the reasons for annexation. People getting bounced around from the city to the county and, and whatnot. Nobody has the authority to do anything, uh, one of that, one of the reasons that is the, a lot of the city nuisances. And those rules and regulations are in our city code, which only applies to the city. The county has a lot of theirs and their zoning ordinance. Their zoning ordinance doesn't come into Bellevue. So you've got two sets of ordinances and neither of them apply to your area. And, and that's where we've got, you know, you call the city, the city says, oh, we can't do it because it's in the county. You call the county, the county says, we can't do it, cause it's in the city's jurisdiction. This will take care of that, um, you'll be within the city limits, the city code will apply to you. Call the police for speeding, you call the sheriff now, call the police for speeding. So there were other things there, again, has come up a number of times. If you're doing something now, as long as you're doing it legally, you, you can keep doing that. Um, you've got grandfathering rights to, to continue doing those things, so. And again, you, you'll be able to vote and, and, and I'm sure now, even if you're not in the city. Council members don't mind hearing from you on some issues, you know, if you wanna complain about, you know, speeding or. You know, even speeding on a city road, if you're not in the city, that, a council member is fine, if you wanna call them anyway. So they don't respond only to city residents.
I got a couple of quick things, I wanted to clarify, don't remember who, but the six hundred and thirty-six dollars estimated per. Taxes, that's per year, not per month, okay? So that's more about fifty-three, I just wanna make sure that six hundred dollars is not per month. And the other thing that I heard a lot of from today is, where should they go for more information? Should we pass a recommendation or not tonight, betw- between now and the city council? Where can they go to get these very specific to their property issues um, answered? Where should they go?
Well, it, specific answers to specific questions, um. We do have, our phone number and email address was on the letters that went out. Again, if you have specific questions about your specific property, um, use those resources. General information about the city is on the city's website, Bellevue dot net. And if you see something on Bellevue dot net that you don't understand or don't, you know, isn't clear to you, you know. Call planning or the, the appropriate department that, that information is listed under.
I, I got two more things to confirm with the city or staff. Trash pickup, do you know if that's a, my memory serves that you can opt out of that? You don't have to choose one if you wanna go, I'm not a hundred percent, so I don't wanna guarantee anything to anybody, but I use the city trash. I think it's a couple, it's not that expensive, but I believe I had the option to opt out.
I don't believe you do. You can pay for your own trash service. But you're going to still pay the city's services, it's part of your bill automatically. As, as far as, uh, I think what Ms. Root said, if somebody's not generating trash, I don't know. I think they would talk to our um, wastewater department who handles the wa- the. Solid waste pickup and talk to them about how that is handled, as far as not having trash pick up there.
Alright, my last thing is, Adam, you did a great job talking earlier. Um, for the meeting minutes, it'll be on the city's website, and a video of this meeting will be also there, so you have. You can review if you wanna take notes from anything like that, or for any reasons at all, everyone present, that's. Uh, two sources that you can get any notes or review anything that was said tonight, so. Um, p- public hearing is.
No, that's police department. Street department, yeah, street department.
If I could make a comment concerning the speeding on Thirteenth Street, uh, you know, teenager speed, I think if we think back. When we were kids, we did it too, I'm not saying it's right, but here's the difference, uh, if you're annexed. There is a resource officer, a Bellevue police officer at Bellevue West. Makes it much easier to enforce when that police officer's right there, all you need is a license plate and turn that in. Oh, I understand, I, I, I deal with that.
Public hearing closed?
Public hearing is closed, yes, commissioners?
Question for staff, I guess, on the, can you show the annexation areas and what are the acreages? Question for staff, I guess, on the, can you show the annexation areas and what are the acreages involved there? It looks like there's quite a few. I know Mister Vasek, we looked at, that was fifteen acres total, his parcels. Which would be the four in the middle, the way it looks. What are the three under the two on the south?
He's got four. The, the full, the full lots there are just under five acres, so he's got probably close to twenty acres on his property.
How about the Old Orchard Place, the way it looks?
Lot fifty-nine and sixty, which are the two up at the top. Fifty-nine is one point six nine acres, which is the top one. The other one's one point six six acres. Which is where Tammy's got the, the cursor up there. Yes, those are the same owner. The one, okay, the one, the one all the way on the bottom is Ms. Hagman, Hagman's property, uh, eleven point three acres. And the one a little bit above that is two point oh six acres. And, and the rest are Mister Vasek's.
Um, to ask the question a different way, just roughly as a percentage of the overall annexation area, what percentage, again roughly, is in the green belt? It looks pretty substantial.
I don't know. Thirty, forty percent?
It looks like between a third and a half, somewhere in there.
It, it would, it would be a guess. I, I didn't look at that.
Thank you.
Again, on the green belt piece of these, I'm not sure how the two on the upper left qualified. They're just under four acres, looks like about three point two acres. Are the owners of those lots here by chance, the two upper left on the red?
He, he lives in Colorado.
He provided an email.
So that was the email we received. Do they use that for egg purposes or that's two residences?
Yeah, there's no row crops or anything there.
Vacant land? Vacant in terms of not a residence there?
Correct.
I guess my recollection on green belt, if you're gonna try to get it today, it has to be over ten acres and you gotta show that you got egg use. Again, I don't wanna second guess the assessor, but the acreage is a Mister Vasek that add up to a little over fifteen and the acreage of Old Orchard there, which is a little eleven. I would support excluding those from the annexation based on the green belt. So I guess Mister Schuchak or Ms. Palm is at lots one, two, three, nine, and Old Orchard Place, seven and eight. Is that the ones we got involved here?
It, it is. Um, you only have Mister Vasek's and Ms. Hagman's, right?
Correct.
Okay. You have lot nine, let's see. Seven, eight, and nine, Old Orchard Place. Lot one, Vasek addition, lot two, Old Orchard Place, and lot one, Vasek second addition.
And I'm gonna apologize, I'm looking at the legals while you're saying that. Would you say those again? Old Orchard Place, seven, eight, nine?
Yes, and two. Lot, lot one, Vasek addition, Vasek addition. And lot one, Vasek second addition.
Lots one and two, Vasek addition, and lots one and two, Vasek second?
No, ju- just lot one of each of those.
Wasn't there four different parcels there that we brought up?
He, he owns nine and two of Old Orchard Place. And then the two lot ones that we mentioned.
So two, seven, eight, and nine of Old Orchard Place?
Yes.
And lots one, Vasek addition, and lots one of Vasek second?
Yes.
Got it. Okay, unless there's any further discussion? Go ahead, Mister Arne.
Yeah, Mister Ackley, I guess I'd, I know we had a, a good conversation debate a month ago about green belt. I, I guess my input is we're just a recommending body. I don't think it's our place to pick and choose what is and what isn't green belt. They've obviously just been established that by the county assessor, by the state somewhere. So to me, I think it's either all green belt or no green belt. That's kinda where I'm at. So I would probably make a amendment that we divide an- annexation area seven into two, two buckets. All green belts and all non-green belts. And we take two votes that way. That would be my recommendation.
I would be fine with that. So I guess if, well, I hadn't made any motion yet. We were just discussing, so.
Be- before that motion is made, uh, question for staff, is, is green belt status renewed annually?
My understanding is you have to apply for it annually.
So I noticed on, uh, I just grabbed one of these lots, uh, it was, it renewed, uh, the green belt date is September of twenty eighteen, so uh, I don't know when the ten acres came into effect, uh.
Plus its grandfathered. Ms. Lee, I would be happy to have you answer that if my colleagues would allow that.
Because I was upset. I was really upset. Because I thought that was agriculture. All these years always has been agriculture. And last year, the taxes went up incredibly. And they said, oh, well, this is residential. And I said, it's residential? They said, yeah. So I applied right then, who have asked that question, to get it back into agricultural. Be, and then that's when I reapplied for that. Did to get it back to that. It isn't the fact that it was residential alone. It was the fact that somebody in who knows where decided they were going to zone it differently, thank you. So perhaps that's kind of what we put ourselves in for. Excuse me. I was not pleased.
Just to follow up on, she said, yeah, I'm just clar- in, in two thousand fourteen, her land was valued at one oh three five. Two thousand fifteen, it went up to one of, one fifty-one eight. And it's been that way for several years. And then for two thousand nineteen, it's going down to ninety-nine, two six nine. Maybe somewhere in there. She lost the green belt somehow.
I have to say too, that my parents passed away in eighteen eighty-nine and my mother in two thousand, um, eight. So I basically have been trustee for that property. And during that time, I just gladly paid my taxes like a good little girl did. And didn't ask any questions until last year.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Well, Mister Arne, you were, as part of our discussion, had a concept of all green belt or no green belt. Are you ready to make a motion one way or the other on that?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to divide annexation area A in, or sorry, area seven into A and B. A would be all lots not green belt status and B would be green belt status.
Could we do one motion at a time?
You, you don't have to do a motion to divide it.
Okay.
If, if, what, what you would do is make a motion to approve or deny the annexation of all the non-green belt lots. And then they, there'd be another motion from you or somebody else to.
Sure, I, I will, I will draw that motion, sure. So I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion that we annex all non-green belt lots.
Motion by Mister Arnie? Second?
Second.
Second by Mister Casey.
All voted yes, motion carried.
So then now I would make a, an- another motion to annex areas seven, green belt lots.
So the motion is for the green belt?
Correct.
To be annexed?
Correct.
All second.
Alright, so we got a motion by Mister Arnie, second by, who's that?
State the motion again, please.
The, the motion would be to annex all of the green belt lots also.
So if you'd be in favor of that, you'd vote yes. If you're opposed to green belt being annexed, you'd vote no.
Correct. Can we have a little discussion then, since it's been seconded?
We'd have to make the motion again after discussion to.
Uh, Ms. Cutzworth.
So, just again, I, you know, I, 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 I'm not, I'm not, it's not because I'm for or against green belt. I think I'm, what I'm against is what we call the donut zoning. Or, um, you know, we've kinda already have this, this whole area A to me is a donut that we haven't annexed or addressed since, you know, you people have said probably longer than I've been alive. If we, if we exclude the green belts again, we're just gonna create this problem for future generations down the road. Um, if it would be all right, I'd like to ask Mister Sullivan a question. Uh, cause he had some comments, actually Monday night, at the city council meeting from last month. You seem very, very knowledgeable in the green belt status. I tried to take some notes. You made a comment on the people you're re- representing on that particular area. They were having a sixty percent tax increase, I, I believe.
Sixty-one percent.
Sixty-one percent. So that sounds like a really big percentage. But I think then you went on to say that the math on that was thirty-seven hundred to six thousand dollars. Yeah, something in that range, right? I, I just, I just kinda wanted to let everybody know. I mean, it sounds like a large increase. But the dollars isn't a huge amount of dollars. And, and those are larger lots on Monday night, or lot, lot larger lots than what we have tonight.
Yeah, I think what's misleading on that though, um, is that typically what happens is, eh, from what I understand and what I saw, what the assessor was valuing that property at, he was valuing that property at the new assessed value at a fairly low right. The likelihood is that that would increase significantly over time. And the property was twenty acres, only has fourteen acres it's farmed, and that's all it produces. Um, and nobody's beating their doors down. So essentially, they're gonna be in a deficit alone just by virtue of the taxes.
Thank you.
And then, one other thing, Tom, just to clarify for you, um, that ten acre rule's been gone a long time. Uh, now, the statute on it is seventy-seven thirteen fifty-nine. It just has to be a commercial production of any plant or animal product. And that, um, the, um, and it has to be primarily used for that purpose. That's it.
I guess a question for you, Mister Arnie, and we're gonna be previewing here, but we've later got some annexation areas where it's basically large tracts of nothing but agricultural land. Does the donut apply to that too?
Um, I think.
Is this unique?
I think if you look back to last month, I, I did not, uh, object to the green belts in some, in one of the areas last time because it wasn't donut. It was truly on the edge of the, of the city limits. So when we get to that, it, it may look at that again that same, same way.
If they don't have a current green belt status, that, they wouldn't be on that list. We, we could have no way of checking other than if they have a current green belt status. Not if somebody would qualify, unfortunately. The, the, the highlighted ones were just who was, um, actively green belt at the time. That's all we can go off of at, at this moment, unfortunately.
So we've got a motion and a second on the table?
Do we need to clarify anything or can we go to, need to do, or can we go to, proceed to a vote?
So a vote for yes includes green belt in the annexation. A vote no would exclude the green belt from annexation. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
We ready to vote? Vote is, uh, two voting yes. Six voting no, with Casey, Perrin, Kane, Ackley, Ritz, and Smith voting no, motion fails.
I, I think it's appropriate, this time for somebody to make a motion to approve the annexation or
To exclude.
To exclude, rather than sending a negative recommendation or uh, no recommendation to the council on those.
I'd make a motion to exclude any of the tax parcels in annexation area seven that are currently uh, provided with green belt status.
Second.
Motion by Hackley, second by Kane.
Vote is six to two, with Arnie and Cutzworth voting no, motion carries.
This item will go to the city council for public hearing on May twenty-first, twenty nineteen. Once again, I stated earlier, that's a Tuesday now, not a, the normal Mondays. We are into annexation area number eight. Request to annex lots one, two, three, eleven, and twelve, Dvorsky's Industrial Subdivision, lots one and two, Dvorsky's Industrial Sub. Replat one, lots one and two, T and L addition. The southeast corner of tax lot four, located in section twelve. Township thirteen, uh, north, R thirteen E of the sixth prime meridian. Tax lot K, part of the tax lot J, tax lot Z, located in section nine. Si- section six. Township thirteen north, R thirteen E of the sixth prime meridian. Tax lot twenty-six and part of tax lot twenty-eight adjacent, located in section one. Township thirteen north, R thirteen east of the sixth prime meridian and all abutting county road right, rights of way. Applicant, city of Bellevue. City, any updates? Uh, this time I will open the public testimony. If anyone cares to provide public testimony in the matter, whether in favor or in opposition, please come forward and state your name and sign in.
Again, Patrick Sullivan, uh, twelve forty-six Golden Gate Drive in Papillion. Uh, I represent the owners of the property that is. Tammy's got that circle over there. Uh, this property sits immediately, uh, adjacent to, uh, essentially the runway of, uh, the, uh, Air Force Base. And so I, I've kinda tabbed out a little handout for you. Uh, the first picture is showing that property. And it's in what's called the ACU zone. The ACU zone is, uh, has decimal ratings and certain requirements that have to be met within those decimal ratings, including particularly, uh, insulate, uh, how much you have to insulate the house against noise or the other buildings, as well as what they, uh, want or don't want, probably is a better way to say that, as far as, um, construction in those areas. As you can see, uh, both the first page and the second page show those three lines, um, on the properties. Uh, those lines are decimal ratings. And so if you'll go to, uh, be like the, uh, purple tag that's on there, uh, this is the ACU zone, uh, area and what has to be done. be like the, uh, purple tag that's on there, uh, this is the ACU Zone, uh, area and what has to be done. There's a permit that has to be required. I've highlighted that for you. And then, um, on there on C, it's notified the Bay Civil Engineer at Off Air Force Base for comments on the proposed development in conformance with the standards set forth in the ACU's report. That property, as you can see, and see how close it is to the runway. Um, and I think the planning department could vouch that if I came to, to the city with a plan to put houses in there, that, that, uh, Bay Civil Engineer would go bananas. A- am I fair to say that? I think, and I don't know what else you would put in there.
I'm not sure that's the correct term, but they, they may object to it.
Well, I've seen some of their letters, and I'd say they've gone bananas. But, uh, nevertheless, the only thing that's really makes sense in that area would, if possible, because it's surrounded by homes on all the rest of the sides, uh, would be, uh, home, homes in that area. Um, so what I did on the next page, you can see all the different housing units. So in the eighty-plus decibel, in the seventy-five to eighty-decibel area, uh, you can't put any homes at all in that, uh, area. So then you go to the seventy and sixty-five. They have two footnotes in it. Uh, it, and it, it, the system's kind of strange how they have that, but it's twenty-five, uh, and thirty, and then eleven. So then flip two pages, and they have a legend. And so that's where it's talking about land use and related structures, uh, generally compatible measures to achieve noise level reductions of twenty-five, thirty, or thirty-five need to be incorporated into the design and construction of the structures. And then footnote eleven says, although local conditions may require residential use, it is discouraged in sixty-five and seventy, and strongly discouraged in seventy and seventy-five. And an elevation should be, an evaluation, I'm sorry, should be conducted prior to approvals, indicating that a demonstrated community need for residential use would not be met if the development were prohibited in these zones, and that there are no viable alternative locations. So the likelihood of me being able to come in and put anything on that property outside of what is there, which is a small farm home and some farm buildings, um, is highly unlikely. Uh, and, um, Commissioner Arnie, I think this is on the edge of town in a sense. It is also in the green belt. There's ninety-two acres on this property. About seventy percent of it is, uh, row crops. Um, so, the next map, which is really disappointing for me, is the green, uh, tab that you have. And if you can see where I circled that in, my, for some reason, my printer won't pick that up. But if you can see on my drawing, it shows Off Air Force Base in pink. It unfortunately shows in white on yours. And then it shows the farm in that white.
Tammy, could he use the overhead there?
For this?
It shows up in color on his.
He's showing something from the comp plan.
This is, this is the comp plan for the City of Bellevue, and the annexation potential plan has low, medium, high-density areas. It shows no annexation of this farm. Finally, uh, if you go to the purple tab, I'm sorry, the orange tab, um, back in, uh, two thousand four, um, this property got annexed by the city. And the city didn't realize when they annexed it that they triggered gre- uh, the loss of the green belt. Um, I went back and petitioned, uh, for the, uh, the city, uh, to, uh, de-annex this area because it was a farm, and that's all it ever was going to be is a farm. Showed the exact same things that I've showed to you tonight, to some extent. Uh, back then, it wasn't as pretty colors, but, um, the decibel ratings and the problems of being able to develop this property are near to impossible. And so the city did, uh, realize that and de-annexed it. Now, the amazing part, kind of difficult to get that, uh, de-annexed. Um, but, um, let me see here. I, I suppose maybe the amazing part is I was able to keep a client that long, two thousand four, and I'm back here in two thousand nineteen. But, um, at any rate, this is a farm. It's greenbelt. It'll always be a farm. And if we try to develop anything on there, particularly based on the notations that I showed in our zoning and on the ACU's plan, there's no way we'll ever get anything here. It is a farm. It will forever be a farm. And we're requesting that it not be annexed into the city. And I'll answer any questions.
Uh, we'll wait till the public hearings close, and then if any commissioners have, uh, questions, we'll ask you to come back up. Thank you. Anyone else for public hearing on number eight? Seeing none, close the public hearing and turn it over to commissioners and staff?
Ms. Palm, can you put up the, the green belt map, please? On these parcels?
Th- this is the only parcel in Area Eight that's greenbelt.
So that's-
That we're looking at annex, I guess. I didn't make it map.
What do the, these look like they're in it?
I'm sorry?
These other dark blues look like they're in it.
No, that's not a-
If this is the only one, that's-
Yes, it is.
We now know. Thank you. Unless there's any discussion, I'd be prepared to make a motion. I would recommend that we do not annex the property subject to annex area, annexation Area Eight into the city based on its greenbelt status.
Would you say that again, please, Mr. Ackley?
I would recommend that we do not annex Area Eight into the City of Bellevue based on its greenbelt status.
Well, Area Eight's got other parcels as well.
I just asked that question. I apologize. Can we put up the greenbelt map then?
There, there is not, I do not have a greenbelt map for Area Eight.
Areas are in there that I'm-
Tho- those are Area Eight parcels, yes.
Got it, but that's the only one. Got it.
Tax Lot Twenty-Six.
I guess back to Mr. Arnie's- Back to Mr. Arnie's suggestion last time, we should, if we break this into two motions, that'll make it easier for the rest of life.
Maybe I'll make it easier. I don't think I would oppose ex- exempting this one out. Status is a little bit different here, I think, than the donut zoning. And there's more than even greenbelt to worry about here, based on what's been presented tonight, so. I don't think we need to break it up and just make your motion to exempt that lot. I think we'd be good.
Okay.
Do you want to state the motion?
Looking to confirm which lot numbers we got here.
Twenty-six and part of Tax Lot Eight adjacent to.
Got it. I would make a motion to approve of Annexation Area Eight into the City of Bellevue with the exception of Tax Lot Twenty-Six and part of Tax Lot Twenty-Eight adjacent. And the rationale for the exclusion is based on its greenbelt status. The rationale for bringing the other lots into the city is that it's in conformance with the comprehensive plan and the benefit of the city.
Second. Motion by Ackley, second by Casey.
All voted yes. Motion carried.
This item will go to the city council for public hearing on May twenty-first, twenty nineteen. Number nine, last one. Onto item three E, Annexation Area Number Nine. Request to annex part of Lot Ten A east of relocated Mopac Railroad and south of Drainage Ditch. Part of Lot Ten A west of relocated Mopac Railroad and south of Drainage Ditch. Part of Lot Ten B, south and west of Drainage Ditch. Palm, Palm Tags Subdivision, Abandoned Railroad Right-of-Way adjacent and Lot Five and part of Lot Six. Part of Lot Seven and Vacated Streets adjacent Lots Five, Six, and Seven. Butterfield Subdivision. Tax Lot E in Northwest Quarter, located in Section Eleven Township Thirteen North, R thirteen East of the Sixth Primoridian. Tax Lots One and Two A and parts of Tax Lot Two and Tax Lot Six, east of Railroad and Abandoned Railroad. Parcel number zero one zero six one four two three zero. Tax Lot Two B, part of Tax Lot Six and Tax Lot, and part of Tax Lot One, Irregular Westerly. Seven-two-four-point-six-seven of Tax Lot Eleven, except Right-of-Way and Northwest Quarter. Tax Lot Eleven, except west fifty-one-point-four-two acres and except Road Right-of-Way. Irregular track in northwest corner of Tax Lot Twelve, except Right-of-Way Southwest Quarter. Tax Lot Twelve, except Right-of-Way and tracked in Northwest Corner and Easterly Tracked, all in South Half. Irregular Easterly one hundred forty-eighth of Tax Lot Twelve in Southeast Quarter. Located in Section Fourteen Township Thirteen North, R thirteen E of the Sixth Primoridian. And all abutting county roads right away. Applicant, City of Bellevue. Staff, any updates?
We have a letter from Mr. Lang, who graciously sat through the rest of the meeting, regarding the property owned by Frank Kreitchi that is part of this, um, annexation proposal.
Uh, members of the Bellevue Planning Commission, my name's Jim Lang. I'm an attorney at eighty-five twenty-six F Street in Omaha. I represent the owner Frank Kreitchi on this particular parcel. I don't know, Chris, if you could, you brought it up there, uh, on the map there. This is a fifty-five acre parcel located at the southeast corner of Fairview Road and, uh, uh, Fort Crook Road. It is, uh, there's no improvements on the property. It's fifty-five acres farmed. It's been farmed forever. Uh, and, uh, under the statute that permits annexations, Section sixteen dash one-one-seven, uh, that permits the city of the first class to annex property, there are three conditions. First of all, it must be contiguous. Secondly, it must be urban or suburban in character. And thirdly, you cannot, ag- you cannot annex agricultural land, which is in effect rule of nature. Uh, all three of these conditions are not met. First of all, right now, this parcel is not contiguous. Uh, that means it's not touching. Secondly, it's certainly not urban or suburban. And thirdly, it's certainly agricultural land. Also, this is greenbelt. It's fifty-five acres. It's been greenbelt since nineteen ninety-five. It's farmed. It's going to be farmed in the future. So, uh, we're asking that this parcel be excluded from the, uh, proposed annexation. And as I look at the legal descrip- description, Chris, I think it starts at Tax Lot Eleven and goes down. Is that correct? At the bat, the very, very end of that, uh, description.
Yes, what you're, what you're looking at is tax, no.
Isn't it tax, we have it, we, we're in Tax Lots Eleven and Twelve, Section Fourteen. And we have a fifty-one acre parcel in one and a small parcel in the other.
You are the irregular westerly seven-hundred-and-twenty-four-point-six-seven feet of Tax Lot Eleven.
Right.
Except the right of way. And then you're the, or, he's, he's, he's all, his client also has this little piece down there.
Right.
Which is the irregular tract in northwest corner of Lot Twelve.
Okay, the regular hundred forty-eight feet of Lot Twelve in north.
No, the, the regular Easterly hundred forty-eight feet is down here. You're, you're in the northwest corner of the, of Twelve. And this is the hundred forty-eight feet east on Twelve, so.
So those are two parcels there. And so we're asking that, uh, this be excluded because it's in greenbelt and because it does apply to the statute, that this be excluded from your annexation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Thank you.
Seeing no one else still left for, uh, public hearing, I'm going to close the public hearing, go to staff and commissioners.
Question for staff. Isn't this part of the ETJ, though?
It is in our ETJ.
Yeah. And is this, I'm sorry, go ahead.
If, if the rest of that is annexed, it will be contiguous. I think you could have a, a long discussion as to whether it's suburban, urban, and age just by its location, less close to the city. Um, I know people disagree on that one. Um, and then, as far as the other criteria, I, I don't recall exactly what that said. Um, but, I'll tell you, in, in the future, you'll loo- look at sixteen-one-thirty, not sixteen-one-one-seven. Because one-thirty has to do with cities in counties with a hundred to hundred, or hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand population. But it says similar- Similar language, yes.
And then is this at all part of the land that the city is looking at to include as it, uh, hopes to develop along Highway Thirty-four?
Th- this, this is, this is not part of the LV eight forty area, which is down here along the highway, Highway Thirty-four area. General area.
Maybe put up the satellite might be easier.
The, the LV eight forty area is, is down along Highway Thirty-four. And the general area where Tammy's got, oh, there, yeah.
Thank you.
So based on the satellite, I guess, to my knowledge, the only developed area in this whole series of lots is the Darling International Plant or the Rendering Plant right there. Is that correct?
Yes.
Which is currently tucked, I guess, if Mr. Lang's client has fifty-five acres next to that, must be another sixty or seventy acres, and next to that must be another forty or fifty acres, just taking rough averages here before you'd get to the actual developed parcel that's down there, which is Darling. And Darling owns the other land, I think, to the south of that. Um, kind of that-
Darling owns, owns everything other than what Mr. Kreitchi owns in this part of the area. There, there is a little bit up off South, uh, Ninth Street. Yeah, um, up in there by the South Street Shop, at the end of that road that's also part of the annexation.
Flip over to the annexation, or the greenbelt map again. So basically, it excludes Darling and the land that's just to the south of Darling, in terms of that area. Otherwise, it's all of that, it's just... And my memory is that used to all be the Pruka Farm, didn't it?
I believe so, yeah.
That all sold at the same time. They used to have land along the river as well.
Question for Seven. Isn't that land south of the Darling Plant? That's on the, uh, on the, would be on the west side of the Railroad Right-of-Way. That
Yes.
Appears to me to be pretty agricultural. There's a farmhouse down there and...
Yes, um, I don't know if there's-
I don't know if it's in the greenbelt, but it-
Is this the one you're referring to, Ms. Smith?
Yeah, it appears to me that with the exception of the Darling Plant, this is very agricultural, very rural.
Tammy, can you snap on the, the parcel boundary, I think? Ms. Smith, you're referring to this piece here?
Yes. Yes.
That one or the one? Or the larger Darling one, I think. The one below that? Is that what you're, is that the one you're referring to?
Everything with the exception of the Darling Plant, again, appears to me to be farmed and very agricultural, very rural.
Yeah, I'm not sure why they don't have greenbelt on that.
Do, isn't that one that was in red?
Off to the right side. Yeah, this one isn't.
That, no, that's not.
Well, I guess the question, Mr. Shuchak, then, if, uh, from an annexation standpoint and based on your- And based on your understanding of state statutes, if we did not annex the fifty-five acres owned by Mr. Lang's client. Along with the other acreage just to the east of it, which is also green belt. Would that knock out eligibility for annexation of the Darling Plant because it's not contiguous to the city? Do we need to take that into consideration as well if we remove some of these parcels that then don't touch upon the only lot down there that is? Currently developed?
On that map, doesn't the area between the city and that first blue, isn't that right of ways that would also be annexed? Kind of filling in?
Which area?
This white area between those two. I mean, what is that?
I think that's, I think that's a rare, I think it's probably a railroad track. In other words, is that city property?
Kind of.
That they're touching it from that side?
Is this a road that's right here that once you annex this, the whole road becomes city property? On that small part.
I don't know the answer to that. Could we maybe go to the satellite map, Ms. Palm?
You can see the railroad right of way.
I think what he's talking about is Papio Creek, right of way through there. Is that what you're talking about?
I'm just switching to the right, the, the map. Yeah. It seems to be. If you can look at my screen so that you can point to them, this part right here. This white spot seems to just. According to the, how I read this map, there's city on both sides of that. And that city would touch at least part of this annexation.
Didn't the city, Chris, annex down to the ballpark when they did the bonding and the ballpark, we kinda flagged annex down. Along Base Lake Road to.
Yes, that's why it's all in. The black. I think the black represents city limits right now.
So your point is, these lots would still join the city from a, if those came in.
Yes, but, yeah.
Albeit with a railroad track in between, yeah.
I believe three hundred feet is still contiguous.
So in my mind, again, with the, uh, agricultural and green belt status there of what. I guess, Tammy, you could click on all of those lots that are currently green belt, but I'd be willing to bet that's close to three hundred acres.
I think I know, I think I know where you're going. The one exception is between that irregular top left of what's, and highlighted in blue there. Go right below where it's highlighted in blue right now. That long rectangle between those two that you just clicked? Yes, that's not marked in the green belt map and it is, it looks like it was.
No, it's, it's part of it. It is part of it.
Okay. Alright, my.
So I guess my feeling would be that if those other parcels are still contiguous to the city and wouldn't violate statutory requirements. We would annex those other areas in, but leave out this green belt land. Again, this has gotta be three hundred plus acres from eyeballing it.
Did you wanna propose a motion?
Anybody else have questions or discussion? So I guess, Mr. Shuchak, we talked about the area Mr. Lang referenced, so I know what that legal is to exclude. But what are those other large tracts of land that are in green belt that were not part of his discussion?
Tax lot twelve, except right of way and tracked in northwest corner and easterly tracked.
So that's the next definition below the ones Mr. Lang spoke on.
Tax lot eleven, except the west fifty-one-point-four-two acres and except road.
I'm not seeing tax lot eleven on the legal description here. Oh, Mr. Lang, okay. So these, these legals are what Mr. Lang discussed. But I had circled, I guess, what are the other two lots that we would need to exclude or the other three? Which are green belt?
Okay, it'd be tax lot twelve, except right of way and tracked in northwest corner, which is the next one. Uh, and then there were irregular easterly one-hundred-and-forty-eight feet, which is that sliver. It's hard to see. It's just a sliver on the eastern edge. And then. Tax, where's tax lot eleven? Where was it? Township eleven? And, and then it's, actually, you. You already have that in there. Cause it's. It's the, it's tax lot eleven, except the west fifty-one-point-four-two acres, except road right of way.
So the descriptions Mr. Lang gave us, plus the one below it.
He, he gave you this one?
Yeah.
And this one.
Yeah.
In between those two is this.
Got it.
And then tax lot twelve, except right of way. And then, and, then. This is, this is another one in, in the irregular easterly.
All the way down. Got it. Okay, there's no further discussion. I would make a motion to annex the areas referenced in. Annexation area nine for growth of the city and, uh, compatibility with the comprehensive plan. With the exception of all of the lots which are green belt status, which include. The irregular westerly seven-hundred-and-twenty-four-point-six-seven feet of tax lot eleven, except for the right of way in the northwest quarter. Also tax lot eleven, except the west fifty-one-point-four-two acres and except road right of way. Irregular tract in northwest corner of tax lot twelve, except right of way southwest quarter. And tax lot twelve, except right of way and tracked in northwest corner and easterly tracked in all of the south half. Irregular easterly one-hundred-and-forty-eight feet of tax lot twelve in the southeast quarter, all located in section fourteen township thirteen north. Range eleven east of the sixth primaridion.
It says range thirteen east. East of eleven.
Sorry. Section fourteen township thirteen north, range thirteen east of the sixth primaridion.
That was a motion. That a motion by Ackley?
Second.
Second by Smith?
Can I ask one, one question, not green belt related? So this is the first time going through this annexation process where we're on the edge of. The city that has the potential to grow our ETJ. Um, Tammy, I don't know if you can pull that up, but if you pull up the ETJ line because of where these properties are, I think it would grow Bellevue's ETJ. So just different than what we've talked about the last two months. So, so staff, if you could just talk about, i- is it a different thinking mindset? Green belt aside that, hey, this is an opportunity. A lot of other communities, Papillion in general and Gretna have really, 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 really pushed to grow their ETJ. Uh, it's kinda tough to see, but I think there's kind of a little triangle piece in there. Would our ETJ grow with this, with the annexation of, of all of these lots?
Our ETJ doesn't, doesn't grow automatically. We have to pass an ordinance to do that. We, we would look at, um, where it could possibly go. And decide if we wanna just do the full arc on it or square it off somewhere, which is. When we, when we went to La Platte and some of those areas down there, we did not cut through the Sands Trailer Court. We left that in the county. We went around it. There were some houses over on the other side of Highway seventy-five that we kinda went around and. Um, of, of that area that Tammy's got there. So we kinda, we kinda went around those houses there instead of cutting that neighborhood. So we, we would look at that. It, it could potentially increase our ETJ. But, again, we would look at that and decide.
So Tammy, if you zoom out just a little bit and click on the farther, farthest southern lot that's owned by the Darling Company. Just so everybody can kinda see how maybe it would affect that, um. And now just kinda, yep, there you go. So it would, it would, in theory, it could grow. Because it's farther south than the current city limit line, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I'm just, doesn't know if that brings more questions or more cons- more comments or whatever, but it potentially would, could grow, uh, the zoning jurisdiction and, and.
Using the same theory, though, we left these lots in. If you click on that one, Tammy. And this one. Those weren't green belt, so I think from, uh, where your bottom would start.
Very close, yes.
I think you'd pick up the same, the ability to pick up the same distance.
That's a good point. Was there a second? There was, by, uh, Smith. Alright, so we have a motion and a second. Um, is there any more discussion or?
All voted yes, motion carried.
This item will go to the city council or public hearing on May twenty-first, twenty nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. Lang, for hanging out with us.
Thank you.
We're done with the public hearings. Current business?
None.
None?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a, can I get someone to get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by parents, second by Arnie.
Other way around.
Other way.
Other way around.
Oh, sorry. I was looking this way.
You can write it down either way you want.
All voted yes, motion carried.
Are we officially closed?
They are.